Alright, it's three o'clock folks, wanna call the meeting to order? For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper? Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda, the discussion on the tourism stuff is Charlie's, he's not here Is he coming for sure?
He just said he was leaving Bridgeport.
Okay, so we will, we will move on to maybe some other items, and I would suggest we move down to the bottom, review Commissioner appointments to various boards, unless you want Charlie here for that, if he has any. I suppose we could wait, we'd wait for that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move into, is Robert here?
Well, it's a timed, it's a timed item, Ken, I have it at four thirty for Board of Equalization.
Okay, well then we'll just sit here and look at each other then, I guess.
Well, you guys wanted the work session.
I understand.
Okay, for just general discussion about stuff, so.
Right. Your general agenda items are timed item too, I'm assuming?
Yeah, you guys wanted, I was told to invite everybody else at basically four thirty, I mean, not that they're not welcome now.
Yeah.
That's not what I mean, but.
Is County Audit Lisa is here for that, I assume? I just saw her. Okay, okay, and then the food service?
And the, like I said, those are all action items for after four thirty, is how I had it set up.
Okay, well, we're kind of at a disadvantage here, but I'm gonna go ahead and start.
Okay.
So, I have approval to, for the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call or record your votes.
Well, that thing didn't work, I held it down that time.
Did it go?
Well.
It's hard to see from this angle with the light.
Okay.
Lisa, could you hit the, do you have the TV remote?
I'll get it.
Alright.
Okay, we're good. Is it not there?
Okay, first item is the Tourism Update, the Huddle Up Playbook Presentation. Is there anybody from the Tourism Committee that would like to speak to this?
I will.
Come on up.
I'm Kim Johns, I'm a member of the Tourism Board. I spoke last week, or last meeting, and I promise that I will be brief. One of the questions that I posed to this group was, what is the purpose of our Tourism Committee? And there was no reply from anyone. So, I thought I would rephrase it and ask each one of you, how much weight does the viewpoint and an opinion of the Tourism Committee play in your decisions that you make as a board individually? So, when you individually vote, does it, how much, do you take into consideration what our viewpoint is? And how do you, how do you jockey that in your mind before you place your vote?
Okay.
Some of that stems from what may be brought up later about the adding a new paid position to the tourism, using some of our Tourism Committee funds. And with that said, I would hope that you as a committee would wait for a recommendation from the Board, from our Advisory Board. And so, I feel like it's kind of getting the card ahead of the horse by having, and maybe there's not gonna be a vote on that today, but I just wanted to share that I feel it's important as an Advisory Committee that we, we have some weight in, in our presentation of our feelings before you make a determination. So, with that said, can anybody share?
I'll, I'll start.
Okay.
I, I put a lot of weight into what the, the Committee brings us. That Committee has been in operation for decades and has done very well. And, and we have been tasked with approving anything over, I think, ten thousand dollars as far as spending is concerned. The decisions of that Committee are the decisions of the, of the Committee. And that's not saying that if something is whatever, out of act or whatever, and it comes to this Board, we may step in and do what needs to be done. But I, I, I think whatever involves tourism starts with tourism. It starts with the Tourism Board. It's made up of, of individuals who have a, a heart in tourism, they have a real desire to see that tourism happens in this, in this area, and they work very hard at it, it's a volunteer position. So, I put, I put a lot of weight in what the Tourism Committee has to say. And not before anything happens, but after the Tourism Committee has reviewed, looked, talked, massaged, whatever needs to happen. And I've always been like that. I may not like all the decisions, but you know what, it is, it is what it is. And so, that's, that's where I sit on it.
I appreciate that.
I'll just tell you that my thoughts are, I look at the Tourism Board similar to I would the Planning Commission or any other Boards that we might have, that's giving their input as to their recommendation for whatever the issue is. And just as the Planning Commission or any others, there may be some times that, that I would disagree, but I would suspect that those would be minimal. You know, what I find with many, even with when we vote up here, or when we hear things from the public, eighty, ninety percent of the time, they're kind of almost a cut and dried deal. I mean, they're, the answer's obvious, you know, we need to do certain things, but those fifteen percent or twenty percent of the items, when we start to disagree some, then I'm interested in the Board's opinion and why, and, and then I take into consideration what they're saying and recommending. Doesn't mean that I guarantee that I'll vote with you, 'cause I might not, but certainly that, I don't know why we would have a Board if we didn't expect to take some guidance or recommendations from what you're suggesting, so that's kind of what I feel.
You know, I mirror a lot of what you said there. I, the only thing is, I feel like sometimes this stuff, to me, I don't have enough description of what's really going on. I don't have enough information of what you really, what your thought process and foresight of the project is gonna be. So, I've never really rubber stamped a lot of anything in my life, and I just don't feel like I wanna fall around and stamp everything until I, if I feel like I don't, I'm not informed enough, I'm probably not gonna vote with it. I feel like I, there was a few times here in the last few meetings, I didn't have enough information to understand what you were doing, and I just felt like I could've used some more information.
I appreciate you recognizing or acknowledging that. And again, it's one of the things, I think communication is gonna be key to the success, well, to everything, basically. And so, if you are at a point that you don't understand, I think reaching out to the Advisory Committee, because our Committee is made up of a group of individuals, but that's what they do. Not, not in my case, but the rest of the Board, tourism is what they do, and they're the professionals, and they are gonna know how things are gonna affect their, their business, their, that, their, whatever. And so, it's just important, I think, that we communicate, 'cause there's certain things that I don't understand.
Well, we're not spending our own money up here, I'm looking after a lot of people's money, and I wanna be sure that I understand what I'm spending, and if I had any doubt in my mind, I'm not gonna spend it.
Yeah, I value all Committees' opinions, as well as the public. I'm not a tourism expert, I do pay a lot of attention to it. I've been in the back scenes of a lot of the activities, doing road, road, traffic direction and first aid and that sort of thing for the different events, and, and I really see a need for a vibrant tourism in our area, but I also gotta realize that, you know, as the future goes, budget's gonna get tighter and tighter and tighter, so we gotta be really good stewards of the funds we have and make sure they're spent wisely. And I'm really open for suggestions and conversations, and unlike Russ, I like to know a lot of detail sometimes, because sometimes that makes the difference on how I vote. And I value probably the public's opinion overall, because those are the ordinary people out there struggling, and I know there's a lot out there that really values, value our tourism and the activities it brings in, and there's others that, you know, don't pay attention at all, which is normal. So, yes, I do indeed value your opinion. I think you guys have contributed immensely to our county, and so I just wish you well and keep doing what you're doing, but I also hope that we'll all have open minds for growth in a variety of areas and opportunities to present our area to the public.
And I think our two, well, your Board and our Boards can work seamlessly together and come to opinions that are gonna be the majority vote. With that said, something such as you mentioned with the Planning Commission, I don't think, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, if I don't know the city government, but would you ever consider jumping ahead and making a decision on a Planning Commission event or Planning Commission decision before the Planning Commission had looked at it or had made a recommendation?
Generally not.
Generally not. And I hope going forward that is how we will proceed. Again, I just, I feel like our relationship, it's just vital, we have a lot of, a lot of money in our account, but it's still going back to the budget, you start looking on bringing in another person, lots of things have to be talked about there. What's the, what's the salary, what's the level of that position? We, you already are paying an employee to do that job, and she does a great job. And so, I think that, you know, looking at the whole picture and getting the recommendation from, from our Board, and doing it in the proper order, I think really would bode well for good, good feelings amongst our Board. I guess that'll help.
I have one more thing to say. One of the most detrimental things any organization can have is tunnel vision, and we wanna make sure that none of us are ever getting that position where we're just blinders looking this direction when we could be looking here.
And it's a great point. When you look at tourism, it's not all just one tunnel, it's not all just events, it's not all just sports, it's not all attractions. It's a blend, a gentle blend that's gonna appease and provide for the entire community with things that they're gonna enjoy, and that they're gonna invest money and come to our community to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, we were kind of stalling till you got here.
Doesn't sound like it.
Well, never mind. Why don't you give us a, your Huddle Up Playbook Presentation?
Sure.
Okay, can we move forward, please?
Yeah, we're good.
Is this the?
You know what? We don't have a, we don't have a converter. Where's it get your computer?
Shove it, yeah, we're plugged in. John, can I do a wireless display?
You can try.
Is that Meridia?
No, it's a Sony. It's a Sony, it's Sony technology. Meridia is a little like voting system. Well, how's everybody been? I haven't seen you in so long.
Good.
Almost like withdrawals.
Doing good.
Almost didn't come back. I started having tremors when I pulled in the parking lot.
Could I get like a limiter to put in the computer in there?
Hmm.
Not so much.
I'm not sure about that.
The computer's turned on, right?
Yes, it is.
Oh. John has the computer turned on underneath here? If we can use that. Well, he doesn't have it that way. So, you would have to go through this, right?
That's fine, we'll just, we'll just go from here.
I think you're good.
We'll just get started here without the screen. As Brenda shared a couple weeks ago, the Scotts Bluff Gearing Sports Council hired Huddle Up Group at the cost of thirty-five thousand dollars to do a SWOT analysis of the area's ability, strengths and weaknesses regarding the, the sports tourism market. The, the overall, the biggest takeaway from here, they had primary recommendations, define and launch a regional sports council, which they had done prior to hiring this group.
Thank you, John.
There you go. Primary recommendation, define and launch a regional sports council, an external focus of community alignment and use of technology. Secondary recommendations include develop a regional sports tourism facility master plan, develop a new indoor multipurpose venue, which is thankfully underway thanks to the Bruner Group, and to enhance existing sports facilities. The Huddle Up Group spent several weeks putting this together for us. I'll start here with the strategic plan and recommendations. The Sports Tourism Ministry has grown consistently over the past twenty years. Studied by the Sports Tourism and Events Association, State of the Industry Report 2021 states that the participant-driven portion of the domestic sports tourism sector was responsible for more, for more than thirty-nine billion dollars in direct spending as of the end of 2021. They've, they've updated this twenty-one report, they're now a twenty-three report that states the growth over, the growth from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three was seven and a half percent in total participants. That would be family members and athletes traveling to sporting events. While they've seen a growth of seven percent in participants, they have also seen an increase of eleven percent in spending amongst those, those folks. Throughout the consultant's time here, it became apparent to the consultant team that there is an opportunity for Scotts Bluff Gearing to enhance its presence in the sports tourism marketplace. The key moving forward will be to empower a singular organization that can lead all community stakeholders in working together to develop tourism-driven assets, sports venues that deliver upon the destination sports tourism focus. Through the execution of a strategic plan and targeted game plan, this new organization can strengthen the region's position as a player in the sports tourism and events industry. So, what, what they're saying here is, is really what I've been preaching for a while now. You know, when I went door to door talking to folks campaigning to be a county commissioner, I talked about my experience in event creation. You know, my, my tourism background is extensive. In my twenties, I lived in Hilton Head, South Carolina, a destination for many people. There I worked in, in the tourism ministry, I studied, I studied hospitality at the University of South Carolina, Beaufort. You know, Hilton Head has a population of about fifty thousand, it might be eighty thousand now, with two point one million visitors that come every year. So, in the industry that I worked in, we had to participate in an, in an ambassadorship program. A lot of times, people come, and they ask the frontline employees, you know, what is there to do here? What should I do besides golf, tennis, and sit on the beach? So, it was up to this ambassadorship program to educate frontline employees on, on how to be good ambassadors to Hilton Head Island. When I moved home in twenty-ten, I started working at the Hampton Inn and kind of parlayed my ambassador training towards my job there as a frontline employee. You know, Scotts Bluff County is my home, and it's very important to me, and I really believe that we are right with opportunity. So, going back to this paragraph here, this, this, this kind of illustrates what I've described as Scotts Bluff County is a void in the geographic area. You think about Rapid City, Gillette, Casper, Cheyenne, the Front Range, North Platte. I think about all these locations, and I think about all the tournaments that our families from Scotts Bluff and Gearing travel to, to go participate in events in these locations. And I think about it, and I think, wow, you know, there's just, we're traveling to all these places, and this is a very reciprocal market, you know, when, when, when Scotts Bluff travels to Rapid City, or when Cheyenne travels to Rapid City, or Gillette travels to North Platte, or, and then Casper plays Scotts Bluff at a tournament in Rapid City, or at a tournament in Cheyenne, these, these teams are, this industry's very reciprocal. And if there were more events here in Scotts Bluff County, we could capitalize on that. The Twenty-three Club held a baseball tournament a couple, probably four or five weeks ago now. The estimate for that tournament was that it brought in about four hundred and ten families, with the spending to be approximately three hundred thousand dollars for that one three-day tournament. Gearing and, there was an article on KNEB.com a few weeks ago talking about the tourism industry and Gearing and the, you know, they really focus on tour buses. And when a tour bus comes to town, according to KNEB.com, when a tour bu, when a tourism bus comes to town, that, that, that bus spends about ten thousand dollars when it, when it pulls into town. The city of Gearing has sixteen tourism buses coming through this season, and so, a cool hundred and sixty thousand dollars of economic impact from those tour buses. Contrast that with a singular athletic event, youth baseball tournament, dropping three hundred thousand dollars in the community, I think there's an opportunity here for us to really expand our economic impact. The, the county doesn't have a whole lot of mechanisms to drive economic activity in the county. The cities have LB eight forty money, they've got other mechanisms as well. The county, really, you know, the only way that we really impact economic activity is through jobs, employees here at the county, we built a jail. Unfortunately, I think, for the existence of the jail, we're doing great now, we've been doing great for about five and a half years now, but for the, for the first couple decades of its, of its existence, the jail was more of a stone around the county's neck and did not create the economic opportunity that we would've liked to have seen. Now, tourism is a completely different animal here. This is an opportunity for us to drive economic. Um, this is an opportunity for us to, uh, drive economic activity in our area. In fact, one of the goals in this playbook here, uh, short-term goal is to drive, let me just find here, opportunities. I'm gonna bounce around quite a bit through this book here. Short-term goal, I imagine this is a three-to-five-year short-term goal. They also have long-term goals here listed. I'd guess this is anywhere from the ten-to-fifteen-year mark. Uh, but a short-term goal here for sports tourism is to create ten million dollars of economic impact. That is tremendous. That is an opportunity that this county has been, um, waiting for, for, forever, for, for as long as I can remember. I don't think the county has ever, um, been able to, say, a single project has been able to drive ten million dollars of economic impact. How do we achieve this? I believe this is through the sports commission. I believe this is through a position called an executive director of that sports commission. That executive director would, um, operate much like a athletic director at a high school, minus the need to supervise coaches or supervise students. Uh, but its goal would be, that position, that goal would, uh, that position's goal would be to, uh, create events. Baseball tournament is a great example of what can be. And we've got a lot of different sports, uh, to help us fill out the calendar. Right now, our summer calendar's pretty full. The, uh, there's a baseball tournament, there's a, there's two bike races, there's a softball tournament, there's Oregon Trail Days, there's the, the Father's Day Car Show, um, County Fair, uh, Marathon, the Balloon Fest. The summertime is pretty full. The shoulder season is what we have to play with, uh, to drive hotel stays. When we talk about all of the other youth sports in the valley that can capitalize on this or to help us capitalize on this, I think about soccer could easily run, you know, one or two major tournaments in the spring and the fall. Uh, we could probably pull off one more softball tournament. We could pull off some more basketball tournaments in the wintertime, indoor soccer tournaments in the wintertime. Cheerleading competitions are a huge, um, opportunity. There is a brand-new competitive cheer team in Gearing, um, headed up by Marty Blanco. And the, the cheer competition market is extraordinary. Uh, one of the items this, uh, sports consultant told us about was the difference between girls' sports and boys' sports. When a boy's sport, you know, if you have a baseball tournament, you bring four hundred and ten, uh, families, that boy is bringing with him an, an additional one-point-two or one-point-three additional people with him. If you have a softball tournament, that female softball player is bringing an, an additional three-point-three, three-point-four additional people with them to the tournament. So, the, the opportunities for, um, you know, we've got softball, soccer, cheerleading, basketball, volleyball, um, and these are, these are sports that do not currently have, um, large tournaments taking place. I think the Twenty-three Club and the softball tournament, the, the Three-O-eight Pride, I believe they are the, um, best performing tournaments we have right now. The problem, we've got great champions there. We've got great champions, Jeff Nimnik at the Twenty-three Club, um, and then the, the Three-O-eight Pride softball program. They're doing a tremendous job, uh, a whole host of families running that deal. But what happens when somebody like Jeff Nimnik retires or burns out? You know, the guy works his tail off Monday through Friday, volunteers all of his time to pull off this tournament. Uh, what happens when he throws in that to, the towel? Well, hopefully we have another Jeff Nimnik that steps up and, and carries the torch. What happens when Aaron Rains decides to leave the community and we no longer have a bike race? Those are the sorts of things that I would, I would like to see, uh, with a backstop too, with this sports council. This sports council, this, this executive director of the sports council would be that champion for all sports. So, if this executive director could create a volleyball tournament, create another softball tournament, create two additional soccer tournaments as well as an additional indoor soccer tournament for the wintertime, um, an additional basketball tournament. Right now, we've got a great, we've got a huge basketball tournament. The Lions Tournament pulls a lot of day travelers to the area, but it doesn't pull a lot of overnight stays. But if we, but what the Lions Tournament has proven is that we can get the cooperation between all of the facilities in town, uh, throughout the valley, really. I think they even play at Hunts Acres and Gearing and Scotts Bluff High School, Middle School. They, they fill all of the venues when they pull off that tournament. So, that tells me that there's, there is the cooperation there. We just, we, what we need, desperately need is a, is an executive director of a sports commission to be that champion to create events. That is, that is the, the main takeaways that I, I gathered from this, uh, consultant's report here. Uh, this is a, there are some weaknesses ident- identified. One of the weaknesses was a, um, you know, we don't have a master facility plan currently. Uh, the, the Huddle Up Group would like to see all the soccer fields, all the baseball fields, all the basketball courts in one location. That is a, that is a pipe dream for, for places even like Denver and Minneapolis, Austin, Dallas, Kansas City. That is a pipe dream for, for almost everywhere we go. I've been to soccer tournaments with my sons in Denver, in Rapid, in Spearfish, um, and not a single one of those tournaments has had a singular location for those tournaments to take place. Oftentimes, we're driving fifteen minutes, you know, eve- sometimes even forty minutes, um, to get from one game to another. This, this report here says that is a turn-off for parents. But when your central, when your hotel is on Highway twenty-six or on M Street in Gearing or U Street in Gearing or this, the Scotts Bluff Gearing Highway, um, six, six or seven minutes to a ball field is, is not a, not a detriment. It's not gonna turn anyone off from coming here. Um, so the weaknesses that they identified in here, um, can definitely be overcome. The, what I see in this executive director position, I see it with a salary around, you know, total compensation around that eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year. That includes the benefits and the wages and, um, and if that person could create the events in my, that I have in mind, that, uh, that, that person could also identify as, um, economic drivers for our area, uh, the registrations for those games, those tournaments would, would eventually come back to offset the salary of that position. We see this model in lots of other areas across the country as well as, um, as well as here locally in the region, I guess. Uh, Rapid City, North Platte, Kearney, uh, I believe Cheyenne, the Front Range has a few, uh, of these sports commissions where they have designated executive directors to, to run these tournaments, to cre, to create these tournaments. Uh, one of the, one of the items in the, uh, tourism strategic plan is to lean on these other organizations and support them, not lean on, but support them to create their own. You know, I, I've asked Nate Rock to be here today. He is a full-time teacher. He's an associate athletic director for Scotts Bluff Schools. He is also the commissioner of the Western Nebraska Football Club. The man burns, burns a candle at both ends. Uh, for him to create just one additional tournament would be like asking him to, to find another fifteen hours in the week where he's already putting in sixty, seventy hours a week, um, during, during his busy times. You know, so if we could have an executive director who worked forty to fifty hours a week creating events, that's where I would like to see, um, this, this, this program move. And ultimately, this would, this would return, this would, the, the return on investment would be greater than any, any other tourism-related activity we've ever seen outside of maybe the, uh, Balloon Fest. Where the Balloon Fest is a week-long activity. You know, if we could get twelve or any, anywhere from eight to twelve additional tournaments, the size of the Twenty-three Club's tournament, um, you know, we could, we could see a lot of economic impact. There's, uh, I'm really disappointed that the meeting started the way it did. You know, this is just a discussion here tonight. This, there's no item on the agenda to take action on any of this stuff. This is just a discussion. But I'll leave you with, with something I've already said a couple of times. This one baseball tournament, three hundred thousand dollars dropped. I mean, we take the mul, add the multipliers to that, what is the economic impact of that? Three hundred thousand dollar tournament. Multiply that by eight to twelve additional tournaments of the same size across the calendar, fifty-two weeks out of the year. We can find eight or twelve weekends where we can really, um, fill the hotel rooms. With those hotel rooms full, the lodging tax comes back. There's more lodging tax to go around for, for items like, um, the Art Center, the Midwest, the Legacy of the Plains, um, and to, to support these other, these other entities. You know, we, Brendan and I were talking the other day, how, how do we get, how do we get more people through the doors of the Legacy of the Plains? What if we had a path, a tournament passport? Uh, just like we have the Nebraska Passport for Tourism. You know, we, we get these guys to go around the state, punch their passport, show that they've been to all these different locations, all these different tourist attractions and... A lot of times, these tournaments give out not just gold medals and silver medals and participation trophies, but they also give out sportsmanship awards. You know, there could be an award for, uh, the team with the most, uh, attraction passport stamps. On that passport could be the Midwest, taking a show, visit the Legacy of the Plains, go to the Art Center, go to the Westmore Pool, um. Those, those, we can find a way for everyone to succeed in this. It's gonna take an, an initial investment to get this thing up and running, but I do believe it'll, it'll, it'll run itself eventually. Those are my comments. Do you guys have any questions?
I have questions.
Yeah.
So, if you hire an executive director?
Can you use your mic?
You can't hear me?
It's, it's real, I can hear you one o- over there, but I cannot hear out here.
Oh, really? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, if you hire an executive director, what are your plans that you're gonna have people in steps below that that are gonna organize all this stuff? He's gonna put it together, but there's a lot of groundwork, fieldwork that needs to, how, how's that get paid for?
So, I, I think a lot of that stuff would come, you know, if, if we're organizing a volleyball tournament. You know, that executive director's gonna do the heavy lifting, networking and, and, you know, getting, getting the facilities, uh, scheduled, creating the tournament, handling registrations, doing ninety percent of the work. The event staff would, would just be a temporary staff. You know, so if we're using, if we're utilizing, let's say we're having a volleyball tournament, um, the families of the volleyball teams would, would volunteer. Uh, the brothers and the sisters and moms and the dads, they would be the ones to volunteer to help get the tournament set up in those three or four days, uh, that the tournaments operate. The tournament then turns around and make it, makes a donation to the, the volleyball club for their, for their volunteer hour. So, it's, it's, it's a, it'll be a, you know, a three hundred or a thousand do, three hundred dollar or a thousand dollar donation to the volleyball club. Same with the soccer club. If this executive director, you know, works, you know, let's say he had, he or she has to put in ten to fifteen hours a ye, a week around the calendar, um, to get all the scheduling done and, and registrations and all that kinda stuff. The Western Nebraska Football Club then would be in charge of painting the lines, setting up the goals, uh, having the facility ready to roll. Um, and then in return for their efforts, they get, you know, they get a donation at the end of the tournament.
Where do you see that money coming from, that additional money?
Registrations, tournament reg, registrations. Registrations are not cheap. These, these tournament registrations are...
Nate, what would a, what would a tournament cost if I was to take them, a team to Rapid City next weekend?
Depends on the mission. We'll pay twelve hundred dollars to play them there.
Twelve teams, twelve hundred bucks apiece?
I had no, I had no idea.
It's cheaper in other places.
I know a friend of mine, his daughter went to Florida, uh, about a month ago to play and he said just his family alone spent eight thousand dollars just to get there. And then whatever money he spent while they were there. So, it's, it's not cheap, but people are willing to pay it.
So, when I take my family to Rapid or Denver, Casper, Gillette, you know, it's, it's about seven hundred to eight hundred bucks a weekend.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so if you got, if you got a tournament here where you're bringing four hundred teams here, or sorry, four hundred families here, and they all drop between five hundred and eight hundred bucks. So, there's a big chunk of change to be spent locally here. And this is not, this is not taking from tourism or taking from the legacy or taking from the bike race or taking from the fairgrounds.
Do you?
This is building the entire tourism industry.
Do you see that becoming self-funded at some point?
I think it's probably, but, once this thing's up and rolling, two or three years, maybe five years down the road, I think it's eighty percent funded through tournament registrations, sponsorships. A lot of these sports commissions, uh, there's a sports commission in Rapid City to have a title sponsor. There's a local physical therapist who, who, uh, is a title sponsor of the, of this sports commission. Those are things we need to work for, work towards. We have to show the value before we can get a title sponsor. And that's, that's where the tourism funds come in. Let's get this thing up and running. Let's show the community the value of this thing. And who knows, maybe it's so lucrative that the Legacy of the Plains wants to be the, the title sponsor of a tournament somewhere down the line.
Who does this commissioner answer to?
Um, I, the way I see it right now, um, a lot of these tours, a lot of these sports commissions are standalone five-oh-one C-threes. Um, you know, they would have their own board, uh, separate from the tourism committee. Uh, this, and the state statutes allow us to do this. The state statutes say that we can contract with one or more individuals for, uh, five-oh-one C-threes and, or other entities to, to help us, uh, spend our tourism money. There was a, uh, suggestion in here on who would fill out the, sports commission. You know, they were suggesting a person from the county, a person from Gearing, a person from Scotts Bluff, and then people from, here we go. Board should consist of seven to ten members. I believe maybe that's a little high, uh, like five to seven. Uh, board members should be the decision-makers for their respective organizations. Sample board members could include the following. Tourism board, the Gearing Tourism Board. Tourism board, the Gearing tourism board, the county, the city of Gearing, the city of Scotts Bluff. A college athletics director, a sports club president, whether it be twenty-three club, Gearing organized baseball, Western Nebraska Football Club. And a and at-large corporate members. Um. This is a, I, and they want two to three of these. And this this falls in line with what we were talking about a couple of weeks ago, um, where the, um. You know, we need, we need hotel interests, we need business interests represented here. Uh, because they're gonna see the benefit of this thing, they're gonna see this through the lens of return on investment. Um. And they're gonna, a lot of, a lot of these, a lot of times these these folks are, they have children that are involved in youth travel sports.
When you talked about, um. X amount of spending from, um, four hundred families or whatever coming to town. What, how do they measure that? Is it simply off of a, uh, matrix of standard amount spent by those types of events? Or, um, is there anything that's, um. Um, hard numbers that I would.
Yeah, I can get that for you here.
Okay.
This is that twenty twenty-three, uh, study I was referencing. The consultant used the twenty twenty-one study. This is the twenty twenty-three study.
And this came from the Hala group?
This study here comes from an organization called Sports ETA. And they do it, they're a national organization. They they look at the industry from a national perspective. As well as regional, but this this report here will show us, uh, some pretty good stuff. Highlights of this year's report, a staggering fifty-two point two billion dollars in direct spending on sports-related travel in twenty twenty-three. Resulting in over a hundred twenty-eight billion dollars in economic impact and the creation of seven hundred fifty-seven, six hundred thousand jobs, six hundred jobs.
Okay, so you said, um, we spent thirty-five thousand dollars on that study?
Yeah.
And, um. When you when you mentioned eighty-five thousand to a hundred thousand for that position, it seemed a little high to me. Um, maybe it's not, and I suppose, uh. Um, well, I'd be interested in if we get into that, um, what type of people we might attract, at what kind of pay. Um, refresh my memory with the lodging tax and the money that comes. In, uh, through the county, which I think is lodging taxes, the only way it comes in, right? How much is that annually? Approximate.
About eight hundred thousand dollars, just under eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
I'm gonna say six.
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 Six hundred.
Five hundred to six hundred.
Okay.
It varies from about thirty thousand dollars a month to about sixty thousand dollars a month, depending on the time of year.
So if it averaged fifty, that's six hundred thousand, so.
And that's your higher months, the months that have bigger activities or, um, like the summer time.
Brenda budgets five hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
So I I see this position, um, annual salary, sixty-five thousand. Plus the benefits would get you up to about eighty-five thousand. That's pretty close to, um, similar positions. Currently employed by the county. Um. And I'd also see this, I real- we really need a driver in this, in this position. Someone who, someone who will take the bull by the horns and create something out of thin air. We need to create a volleyball tournament out of thin air. We need to create soccer tournaments, basketball tournaments. We, and so this position would be, could also be incentivized through a through a bonus structure or something like that. That would, that would, that would really drive this thing forward, is if if the position was incentivized.
You'd you'd mentioned that you think it's a standalone, but yet we want to use tourism money to pay them, but the the salary is out?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 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 initial investment would 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 come from tourism.
So do you s- do you see this commission working, working with the tourism committee in conjunction with the tourism committee?
I think they'd have to.
Okay.
You said we have a local sports council already?
Yeah, so we did, uh, we spun off a sports council, the Scotts Bluff Gearing Sports Council in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, we had a kickoff event, um, unveiled our logo. Um. Had a ballgame between the city of Gearing and the county employees and, um.
And, um, can you tell me who's on that council at this point?
So it's Brenda Laisie, Carla Streaks, Erin Rains. Charaya. Shereya Toof from the city of Scotts Bluff. There's one other name on.
Definitely.
Sorry. Amy Silent, was there one other one?
And who is the, um, I guess, how often does this group get together and who's the, I'll call it the president of that group, or do we have one?
So thi- this is kinda where where things, uh, you know, things, I s- I I felt the need to drive this forward. Uh, so that's why we had the discussion we had two weeks ago. Um, there was, I made a comment at the end of the meeting a while back. Um, that I was, uh, I would like to see more done with the sports council. And then Brenda and Erin came to give an update on what has been done two weeks ago. And that was, um. You know, they they told us about the creating the council. A year later, they, um, had this. Um, report done, you know, they had to go through, they had to, you know, find the, find the correct company to. To put the report together for us, and that took some time. The report itself took some time, um, the, uh. There's a lot going on in tourism already. Um, so I think the, between the, uh, people who are on that committee right now. And who, uh, you know, they've they've already, you know, just like the the soccer club's commission. You know, they they've already got forty to fifty to sixty hours a week on their schedule. In order for them to, you know, start creating tournaments, I I just believe that they're, um. The bandwidth just isn't there. They they, you know, we've got balloon fest, we've got cycling, we've got Oregon Trail days, we've got all these other things going on. Which is why I would like to see the separation, to have a sports market, have a leisure market. Gearing, Gearing takes care of the conventions bureau, that kind of stuff. You know, so this would kind of, this is a third, third spoke here. Um, and I I think we need to get this thing rolling.
The, um, so I'm trying to figure in my mind about the, uh, I'll call it infrastructure. Meaning the the fields and the, all of those things. I'm assuming again, we would develop, um, tournaments to fit our infrastructure, uh, was what we would need to do. And, um, and then as those particular tournaments start to grow. Hopefully, we can possibly have, um. Cities or whoever help grow that infrastructure as needed. Um, I guess I'm also. Thinking about hotels, motels, and those types of things. Because I heard someone say, and it maybe was you, it may have been someone else, that, um, I heard someone say that. I asked the other day, um, it seemed like we didn't have a twenty-three club Father's Day tournament. And someone told me that, um, they were kinda asked not to have it on Father's Day. Because there were so many other things going on Father's Day, and that we were kinda maxing out. Motels, hotels, that type of thing. So we don't, no matter what, we'd have to be in coordination with all that, right?
Yep, absolutely, and that's that's exactly right. The, uh, the tourism people today have have done a good job of of. Spreading out the season. You know, at one point we had, one year I think we had baseball, Father's Day, car show, and the bike race. All scheduled for the same weekend, and now those all happen on on different weekends. And that's, that's the goal. We need to, we don't, we don't need baseball teams staying in Torrenton or. We need them staying here in the county.
No matter what the activity was, we need them staying here, although there may be some of the, um, activities that are big enough. Uh, like the balloon, uh, races, I'm assuming that's big enough that people have to go out further. To stay and that all the motel hotel things are full. That'd be my guess, but.
Yeah, we did have a, we did have the softball tournament on top of another event this year. Um, hopefully that'll get ironed out in the future. Um, Mark, your question about where do these numbers come from, this is, this is your, uh. These are your numbers here. So if we go all the way to the right to twenty twenty-three. Um, a day traveler spends ninety-four dollars, an overnight traveler spends a hundred and ten dollars.
And that's that Sports ETA website?
Yeah. I'm sorry, this is. Go down here to per traveler spending, overnight traveler, three hundred sixty dollars, a day traveler, eighty-one dollars. Am I reading that right?
I I can't.
I just thought I heard.
And I thought you didn't do any more to that.
Okay. So the these are legitimate numbers, you know, this this group, Sports ETAs, is has been around for many years, developing this report. Uh, these aren't number, these aren't just back-of-the-napkin numbers.
And that, these are also from very large markets. Sports ETA is a very, very large market, unfortunately, the smaller ones don't put out reports like this. That I'm aware of, I haven't found one yet anyway, but I could check into it.
But when I asked, but when I asked you about day spending and overnight spending, this is the report you sent me.
Yeah, yeah.
Back, back to my question about who's going to. Who does this person answer to? Okay, would would they answer to this, to this, this board that would be created with that? Would they be the ones to hire that individual, supervise the individual?
I think that's, I think that's to be determined. I I think we can work through that, you know. Right now, we have a tourism director who's a Scotts Bluff County employee, takes direction from the board of commissioners. Uh, the job description could be written very s- very much like the current job description for the tourism director. Or it could be an employee of a five oh one C three sports council, or it could be a twin city development employee. Um, who answers to a a sports council board. There there's a lot of different ways to to unpack this thing. State statute allows us to contract with individuals, firms, nonprofits, corporations. There's, there's a lot of, lot of opportunity there. There was a couple of other things I wanted to show you in this report. Uh, we talked, I talked to you in the beginning about the year-over-year growth. So this bar graph on the left shows, um. Travelers, you see a big dip there in twenty twenty. Year-over-year, from twenty-two to twenty-three, we see a seven percent increase in travelers. From twenty-two to twenty-three, we actually see an increase of eleven percent in spending. The, this is a growing market, this is not by any means mature. This is a growing market that we can, um, capitalize on. Any questions from out here?
Do you know what the Brunner facility, what is that supposed to be, what is?
Um.
You have to that way clarify as far as what all of the.
Indoor basketball courts, indoor field turf. Multi, multi, multi-port, yeah, yeah, she'll be able to do. That's another thing is, you know, when you talk about indoor soccer, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity there. We could have, uh, we could play on hard courts, we could play on turf. You know, the facilities in town that have hardwood, you know, they might want us to put down mats or something like that, uh, in common for. I know in Carney, the, uh, Carney Visitors Bureau purchased mats to cover their courts so that they could. Um, have sporting events that they that they want to have, right?
So will, will the Brunner, I'm sorry, will the Brunner facility have a person to run it, bring in tours of their. You know, tournaments and that kind of stuff, or is this?
You know, they're probably just a, uh, they'll have a facility manager, that would be the person that we would, you know.
Because when Mike is doing the power play, there was a person there that set up all the tournaments and had. You know, set up all the registrations and handle that kind of stuff to get the tournaments organized and powered to play.
So power to play, is that what's called? So power to play, that that's a lot like what the this, that would operate very similar to this, um, or we would sim- operate similar to them. Um, but we don't have our own facility.
Right, but I thought that the Brunner facility was, I mean, it's based on the power to play concept.
Right, right, so they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be large enough to to do what we are envisioning here. You know, with, uh, the wintertime indoor soccer tournament or a basketball tournament. Uh, you're gonna need every facility from Hunts Acres to the high schools, the middle schools. Um, maybe even the fairgrounds, you're gonna need every facility. The the Brunner facility is just gonna be a piece of that.
But it won't meet the recommendation of Pala to have one central location. So you agree that we're not gonna be able to leave that criteria?
Yeah, I I I mentioned that earlier, there's, there's no, that's a pipe dream. There's, there's no, there's very few facilities in the entire United States that meet that criteria. You know, I I go to tournaments in Denver, and we're, we're driving forty minutes between games to different facilities. Go to tournaments in Rapid City, it's the same deal, it's maybe just a twenty-minute drive instead of forty-minute drive. These tournaments that are existing around us, these families are already traveling. Very far to get from game to game, so when they come here, it's gonna be a relief to them to only travel twelve minutes if there's a train. You know, eight minutes if there's not a train. Uh, this will be, this will be one of the easiest locations for them to travel to and and experience their tournament.
So would you say that, um, we need initial fee line to get those started? How does the registrations pay for the salary of this person? So what kind of timeline can you look at that you'll be utilizing funds for tourism to support that?
I'd say, I I think a a goal would be five. I'd say, I, I think a, a goal would be five years, I think that'd be a realistic goal.
So how does the registration pay for the salary, I mean, so how do you relevant that? How does that work, is that how that applies in there?
Yeah.
So would that county be, would that county? Be, like, would that person be in charge of collecting the funds and just bringing you over to like my office and putting? Them in their fund, or how is that normed?
No, I, so I think if, if we run this through TCD or we run this through a sports council, um. You know, that sports council would be, is a five oh one C three, everything would flow through there.
Would TCD, would the sports council be responsible for paying for the salary or anything like that, or would it only come out of? Because I think, I mean, if it works, if they're working for TCD and he's running it, how is that a company employee?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely something that could be explored. I think the, yeah.
That's just, that's just my question, you know, or is it something that, you know, there are. Other entities like the City of Gearing has tourism, you know, kinda like our um, emergency manager position where it's paid for by. Not just, I don't know, maybe it's paid for by other counties, but it is something that you would potentially want to have. Say if you're gonna be helping with, with like TCD help you with so that the Brunner doesn't solely own the county.
Yeah, we could have those conversations, there's, the, the opportunity is definitely there. Um, there, like I said, you know, the state statutes that govern how counties spend tourism money is, it, it leaves a lot of. Um, there's a lot of different avenues you can go down in terms of employees contracting with other organizations to carry out. The duties of, of the.
Because there, I think if you weren't taking like all of the money out of, especially tourism funds, you know, it might be easier to. Cash flow for a longer period of time.
Yeah, I agree.
What's any current participants in these tournaments?
I'd say five to eighteen.
Yeah, but with our current demographics in our country, aren't those groups declining in size every year?
Um, probably, yeah, I think you're, I mean, we're seeing birth rates go down. Um, we're also seeing, you know, lots of immigration though. Um, you know, in, in this study here, the sports ETA study uh, shows us growth in this industry. It is by no means a mature industry, it has not. Um, even if it was flatlined, even if it was no growth and it was just staying where it's at today. Because we are a void in the, in the geographic area, um, that we're. I don't know if you caught my, my earlier comment where, you know, Cheyenne's traveling to Rapid, Rapid's traveling, you know. So, so it's a very reciprocal industry, so, and right now we're just a void. And if we have these tournaments here, um, those places would come here. Um, so we, even, even if the industry was flat, I think we, we would still benefit from this reciprocity. Um, but even with, with the growth of the market, I think it's a, it's a bang bang, it's a, it's a win-win.
We're having a three B three tournament on the twenty fifth of August.
So what, what kind of numbers do you have for that?
Uh, they weren't great, um, simply because there's. It, it's our intention to ensure that we, we host a tournament for our community that's located in the area, so. Those numbers for three B three tournament are just not, that's not the kind of tournament. So that's, it's, it's three B three, it's not. So, um, they, it's, it's been good, it's a great community event, um, our numbers are good, but. Um, it has been something that we haven't, we haven't invested enough.
Like registrations to have the.
I mean, too. We run that through uh, Nebraska Soccer Union of Omaha, as Omaha comes up, et cetera, so they, they do all the registration there. So we have, in the past, we're on tournaments, um, that have been very successful, when we, we collect the registration, it's been successful, but. It's been quite some time, we've, we've focused almost primarily on our, our recreational center, I didn't use people out of town. I, I, I will say that Charlie's exactly right, the economic impact is, could be immense. Um, I think there's a lot of potential to do some of those things, um, there, there would be a lot of questions you'd have to answer, and I, I read the report as well. Um, I, one of the things that I think you really have to take a look at is the quote that was in, in the report, that river. Is wider and deeper than we make.
Yeah, and that's, so I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I'm gonna come back to you a couple more times. I'm gonna go over here after this comment. The report, Nate brought it up, the report says that river is deep. And, and that's one of the issues we have with um, tournaments here. Is we have wrestling federations that will not go to each other's tournaments. And so, so how do we get the, the most out of our um, area? Well, if the sports council owned the event. Gearing Federation couldn't say, I'm not going to that because of Scotts Bluff, or Scotts Bluff will say, I'm not going that becau- to that because it's Gearing's. Or, you know. John has, I have a Scotts Bluff club and John has a Scotts Bluff club, well, I'm not going to John's tournament. There's a whole lot of that going on, especially in the wrestling stuff. Um, but if we had a, if we had. One of the things that report said is, this is unclear, who owns sports tourism? And that is, I think that kinda answers Heather's question, is who owns this? And I think Scotts Bluff County needs to own this, to, to. I mean, crap, we're fixing a river bridge right now on the Scotts Bluff Gearing Highway. It is the county's job to bridge this gap. And that's, that's what, that's what this is gonna do. Gearing owns, Gearing is responsible for this, this, the Gearing side of the Scotts Bluff Gearing Highway, Scotts Bluff is responsible for everything north of the bridge. The county doesn't own anything that comes up to the bridge, but we own the bridge. And that's what we need to, that's, that's, that's a, that's just a good illustration of what this can be, what this should be. Okay, sorry.
Um, no, I'm actually on the county tourism committee. And um, I agree, I think this is a good idea, not necess- the commission, like, as a. Probably if you look at Cheyenne, North Platte, Omaha, there are more non-hospitals than a county position. But I think that funding that is provided by the county makes sense. And as the part of the committee, there's a lot of money that we designate for sports tourism already. And to have kind of a, a s- a specific place where that goes, or a person to designate what that means, or a percentage, or. That's what this is, and we have the store, and we have the major, and kinda have that put together in a way that. We all understand what that means for each piece, and we know that there is a, a designation for that and this is where it goes. Um, but my thought is looking at the other ones, and being in Cheyenne for twenty-some years, looking at perks, rec, Brunner. And it is nonprofits that run it, not necessarily a county, city, government employee. So that way it kinda brings everybody together, and then you could have the, the river that divides everybody. And have designated people, they're hiring a new perks rec person, um, a bracket events person who's in Scotts Bluff. We have, I think bringing all those pieces together makes sense. And I think it would give us as a tourism committee better direction of where that designated money should go, whether it would be for. Referees, umpires, incentives, whatever that looks like, and so it's designated and we know that it's in that one line.
Charlie, I have a comment here on that, uh, between a five oh one C three and the county owned, I kinda agree with this lady about, uh, county should own this. If we don't, I think we're gonna get into an insurance situation where the five oh one C three wouldn't be able to buy insurance the way we can buy insurance to. Put a blanket over this whole project.
Uh, that's a good point.
The Oregon Trail Community, and Oregon Trail Community Foundation and TCD, usually able to give you those kinds of. Places to keep money and keep things designated, then do it for the whole community, so it's, at least we have those avenues that are able to. Keep those designated, even as, you know, so Heather doesn't have to take care of treasurer cases.
Yeah.
Right, whereas, you know, because if you have. You know, if you're, we're paying the salary for somebody, you know, if the money should come out of, out of their fund, you know, you should be. But if TCD or five oh one C three does, and we just contribute X amount of dollars to that person every year via budget. You know, it just, it needs to be covered except, and I both agree, I mean. My daughter traveled for six years playing basketball and we spent thousands of dollars all over the place. But there were some tournaments here and some that were local, you know, you get people from Alliance that come down and they're gonna drive home everything. You know, but you might get some places a little bit further, like Hot Springs, and they're gonna stay all weekend, too. So, I mean, it varies, um, and I know local hotels would like be added revenue and stuff like that, but. You know, your local hotels have capacity for.
Yeah, so.
What you're talking about.
So the huddle up group sports playbook. Mentions, I think it said four hundred to five hundred hotel rooms that are. Quality enough for thi- this sorts of, this sort of tourism. Um, is laid out there in that book, so, um, that would be the, you know, we wanna shoot for. We wanna shoot for six or seven hundred people, right? We don't wanna stop at five hundred, we wanna, I think the ultimate goal here is to build another hotel. Build two more hotels, build three more hotels. And if this is not, if you say that's not possible here, there's the door. We, this is economic development, this is the county's only opportunity for economic development. And um, if we wanna diversify the tax base, if we wanna support, if we want lower property taxes, this is how we get it done. We grow the hotels. We build more hotels, so. You know, if, if, if overflow right now is, is going to Torrington and Bridgeport, you know, that's great. Um, if that shows, if, if the Marriott or the Hilton uh, can do a market study and say, hey. We need another hotel in Scotts Bluff and Gearing, um, that's, that's the goal here, that's the, that's the ultimate goal. Not only, not only that, but, you know, I think our community thrives if that happens. And al- along the way, as we work towards that, as we get there, the community thrives. Gas stations, restaurants, the ho- the current hotels, um, everyone, everyone wins.
That study available on county's website online?
Can we?
Is it on the tourism page?
It's not on, it's not on there yet, we can get it. We can get.
Allow us to review it.
I don't know, are we allowed to publish sports ETA? Okay, no, I think we had to have a membership for this one, the huddle up playbook, we could definitely publish. Yeah, 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 there's two different, two di- there's two different studies, I've, I've been switching back and forth between here. Yeah, yeah, we can put that one up, yeah. Um, I wanted to, yeah.
To me, this is a very longstanding conversation. And I'm happy for her, this is gonna be so great, we got her one stipend. With Brenda, Brenda is what this is going to do with her budget. She cuts off a lot of her little money, you take two hundred thousand dollars out of her budget. That's gonna be a huge step in her capacity to develop tourism tourism. And trickle down effect to people like, like Seaplane, whoever else applies the funds, that pool is not like that. I would love to hear some discussion on that happens, which we use.
So first of all, I, I just wanna make a comment that the legacy of the planes has been awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars this year, fifty thousand dollars next year, and fifty thousand dollars the following year. And that would, that, that won't change.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. We're in the middle, okay, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you've got a hundred of it already? Okay, so we got fifty thousand dollars more coming. And, you know, that, that's not going away, that's, you, that, that money's still gonna get there. We're ju- we're just, we're just direct, we're just directing it to where I believe and where I hope other people can see the benefit here. We're directing that tourism money to, to areas that are gonna show greater return on investment. Which are in turn is gonna increase the receipts for, for lodging tax. There will be an initial um, investment, you know, that's, but it's, 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 it's a.
Asking a question.
Her budget's fine.
What's that?
I said her budget's fine.
Budget's fine according to the management.
I was saying, pulling up, I think, she might, there might be a project or two they can't do, but.
So any money that's been applied for already and, and awarded, that, that money is spoken for and, and going to the people that it was awarded to. The uh, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunities here for um, discussion, we could, we could go into the merits of. Um, some of the other awards that have been made and whether or not, you know, there was much return on investment there. Um, we could also talk about, um, will this even work? You know, will, will we get the return on investment, I'm open to that discussion. Um, my experience is that, yes, it'll work, I.
Um, well, what I, what I told Charlie when we sat down and talked about this, I told him. That the only people I was worried about was the people that put money into the conference. The ones who create this fund, and right now, it's, it's not sports right now. Right now, it's the legacy, it's the monument, it's the Wildcat Hills, it's the, it's Midwest Theater. It's all of the different attractions and the events, we can't forget them, I mean, it's old West Bloom Fest, it's Oregon Trail Days, it's. All of these people are the ones who are building that, that pool of money. So I said, I want you to talk to them, how they feel about taking those funds away, because, I mean, she, she's a hundred percent correct. I mean, sure, we have enough right now, as Lisa said, but once it's gone, you know, we're, we're not gonna be able to see. That big of a return until this program is up and going. And it will definitely limit what people are going to be able to reply for, whether it's for attractions, but I mean, events is the main thing. Cause that's how we really make a lot of money, is events, so without the ability to, you know, do some of those things, then. So that's what I told him, I said, you know, that I didn't mind what, what he was considering, I just wanted him to talk to the folks. That contributed to that pool of money.
So I, I would, I would say we have a lot of hotel stays because people come to the money. People stay an extra day because they go to the legacy of the planes, people stay an extra day because they go to the Wildcat Hills. There's a lot of lodging tax that comes in because of that, but the, the majority of lodging tax is from business travel. The Ho- the Hampton Inn and the Marriott and the Holiday Inn, those are full Monday through Friday because of business travel. Not because of attractions, so this, this money isn't just for the attractions or just for the events. And the main goal here, or one of, one of the main goals, um, this is, this goes back to, you know, a couple of years ago, um. We wanted to create more events, that was, that was an, that was an idea that was floated to the tourism committee. And was adopted and agreed upon, that we should have, we should be creating more events. And these events that are ongoing, that currently exist, let's get them to where they stand on their own feet. So that we can create that, so we can fill another weekend of hotel stays. So. Oregon Trail Days, I mean, when I consider, if I, if I take out business travel, Oregon Trail Days is probably the most important weekend of the year. And. I think every, every single event and attraction and, and. And I think every, every single event and attraction and, and business owes, might owe their existence to Oregon Trail Days. The fact, but the fact is, Oregon Trail Days should stand on its own two feet. We can help, we can, you know, can it grow? Do we have, can we fill more hotel rooms that weekend? There's, I think there's about ten percent that we can fill more. So, if we can help, you know, can we extend, you know, can the, can the, what can we do to get the concert back up? Back up and going to make this thing another day longer? Um, those are the kinda questions, um, that we, that we need to answer there. But, um, you know, when, when the bike race started coming and asking for money, you know, that's when we said, we wanna help you get going, but eventually you gotta stand on your own two feet, and we're not there yet. You know, we've, we've told a lot of people, a lot of events, Horizon Musical Fe- Music Festival, they can already stand on their own feet. They told us, this is what we want from you, but if you can't do it, we're gonna do this anyway. That's tremendous, right? I mean, that's, that's the goal, is, is to get these events up and going, create, 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 and, and, and fill the calendar.
And you have the same logic with this position, that you're proposing that it should be something, you know.
It should be.
And if it's not?
It's not, you know, you gotta, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at, we'll took, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at it.
Charlie?
Yeah.
In other areas, either counties or communities where what you're proposing here is up and going?
Yes.
How, how do they work in conjunction with their, their local, either visitor bureau or, uh, uh, tourism committee? Do they work, are they working hand in hand, is it a, is it a separate organization, how, how does that, how does that fly?
You know, I, I guess I could defer to Carla and Brenda, I know Carla went to Carney to talk to how their, you went to Carney, you went to Rapid? You guys wanna talk about how those started or how they got up and running and what your experience was there?
Oh, I can only speak through my experience with Sports Nebraska. And, um, nobody has a huge commission except for Lincoln in Omaha, of course. I mean, they, there's no other place where, in the state where they feel this is, um, feasible, however, Carney is about ready to approach that. Um, with all the new golf and, um, all of the expansion to Soldier Stadium, I think is what they call it, something like that, it's all the baseball, new baseball, I can't think of what exactly. And then, of course, the brand new sports facility. So, they'll be able to grow, but all of the smaller communities just have, um, like a rec center or something like that, like a parking recs within the community. Nobody else has a big commission like that.
Majority of, of smaller market, the sports commissions do operate on some level in association with the destination marketing organization. They might be a subcommittee, um, of that destination marketing organization. Some of them, most of them operate with a separate board of directors, but they operate under the umbrella of, of the actual destination marketing organization. That's the way it is in Rapid City, that's the way it is in Tulak. Um, and part of what Brenda said is because, I mean, our markets just aren't big enough to have a standalone, um, commission and employees normally within our small area. That being said, all of those are utilizing what is required in all these sports councils to be effective, and that is collaborative partnerships. The sponsors that work with this committee and provide some of the funding as well as, you know, a lodging tax funding and, and other tax fundings that can actually work under the entire umbrella to fund all of the types of things, and put in both the salaries and those infrastructure items that are needed in order for the sports commission to function.
Lisa, you had your hand up, and I'm sorry.
He answered it.
Okay.
He spoke to what I was, I was, he can't.
Okay.
Just wondering, the tribe, we're meeting a lot of these friends with, um, the bus tours that are coming in. Do you agree with the, the return on investment for those that tried to pull them?
He's being a little bit squirrelous on, on those remarks. Um, the reality of it is, is, is any successful sports industry, you don't ever put your eggs in one basket. A successful tourism industry is built upon building those market segments within your community and utilizing all of those, from leisure tourism, the convention meetings, the group tour markets and sports. Um, the reality of it is, is you need all of those market segments because visiting and traveling public will consider your destination for different reasons. And if we're gonna be, continue to be successful, we have to look at all of those market opportunities and invest our time and our resources in all of them. Because all of them build every aspect of our destination that makes it a viable product for whoever those markets are. And he is exactly correct, the sports market being the fastest growing market that we have across the country. Um, and I think that we have made some inroads with this study and an initial development of just an ad hoc sports committee. And the opportunities are great to grow, um, and develop a program in that sports market that is only going to help our destination grow and increase for many years to come. But it's one segment of our industry, and if you don't put all of your eggs in the basket at the risk of risking leisure markets or convention markets or group tour markets or any other market. It has to play in conjunction with all of those other markets. And in the sports market arena specifically, there is so much more opportunity for collaboration because outside sponsors and business investments, um, and all those types of things play a key role in every, any sports, uh, commission that's effective in doing their job and being very successful.
Well, you know, we, we, we get a lot of reports for both City of Scotts Bluff, Gearing, money that the tourism committee has given to those different sports venues. We have an excellent facilities, I guess, more than one. I, you know, you see what Gearing has done with the baseball program, Twenty-three Club, the Cleveland Field, all, all of the, all of those things that, that Charlie is talking about, that could come here and do all of that. I, I, I have no problem with the idea, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful idea. But I think it's gonna take a little bit of time to pull the whole together, uh, and, and the, the, working with, that's why I was asking, whether you would work in conjunction with the tourism committee to help move things along, whether this would be to- something totally separate. Uh, you've mentioned more than once about, uh, contracting with maybe TCD or the Chamber or somebody else, if they're willing to partner and, and, you know. I think it's gonna take a little bit of work, but I, I think the end result could really be good, I, I, I really do. And I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying about avoid here, where people are going all around us to participate in sports when we have some outstanding facilities right here, right here in our own community. And, and if they could be scheduled properly, I, you know, I think it's a plus, plus for everybody, I don't, I don't have a problem with it at all, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna say, we have to work together, and that's the only way we can survive. So, when we, uh, when the money has their new property, seasonal employees, they take them all the way, all around and visit the attractions. Um, I actually let them come back for free because, you know, they get like twenty minutes, well, you can barely see our lobby in twenty minutes. So, like, as long, as long as they're an employee with the, the money, I let them to come, come back free. A lot of times they come back with a friend or their family comes and visits. But I want them to know, why should I tell, just like Charlie was talking about with the front line employees. Uh, we had, um, I can't remember, one of the restaurants, people said, you have to go to Legacy. We had somebody from the Netherlands tell another couple from the Netherlands to come to Legacy of the Plains, and they came this week. Like, that's, that's, yeah, that's. And then there was two people from the same company.
And then there was somebody else who didn't have the tickets.
Yeah, I think we understand what they said, but they were having fun. But we tell people, you know, um, okay, it's twelve thirty, you spent here a lot longer, a lot longer time than you thought. You know, there's the log camping, there's Brunta, there's the Mexican Bowl, if you like Mexican Bowl, here's nineteen different places to go. These are our three favorites, like, we have to work together in order to do it. Um, I, I just spent seventy-five percent of my weekends since October, traveling. Yeah, all for sports, you can tell by my yard, it is, yeah. And I apologize for accusing to my neighbors, but it's true. Uh, but our, but those, those winter travels, it's a lot more local. Like, we're getting local stuff, we do have basketball, just so you know, Charlie, softball does have two tournaments. Gearing and Scotts Bluff, when they combined, they kept both of them. Um, and they did that because that is their fundraising mechanism. You don't wanna price out so that, because we have two dollars that, that play softball. So, so first of all, like, we have to work it, and, um, and all of us, I think, we're really, really good to get, we understand this. But number two, my second question, we, so the, the events that we currently have going on, so like United, uh, Three Way United, uh, Twenty-three Club. Are they then supposed to, do they have to pay this new person to be able to do it? Um, are, because their registration fees going to them, whoever this person or council is? Or do they gotta keep those and maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, uh, the way I see it, the, uh, events that already exist, you know, they're, they have no obligation to join or have the sports commission own their event. If they want assistance, absolutely, I think the sports commission can help with that. Um, primarily, I see the sports commission just creating new events. And let's say, you know, Twenty-three Club president retires, calls it quits, you know, and there's not a guy to come up and say, I'll, I'll take the reins. You know, then maybe Twenty-three Club approaches the, the sports commission and says, hey, you guys wanna run with this now? That, that's kinda how I see it happening.
I, I kinda, what, um, Anne was speaking, Anne could speak a little bit too. Like, I, I, I think getting a little more into sports marketing is a very good idea. Uh, personally, I would rather, I'd rather have kind of those capital improvements fund going to improving our, our facilities. This is the tannest I've been since I've been twenty-five, and I actually have tanned toes, I already won't show you, but, but that's because, I mean, we sit in, um, the Twenty-three Club softball complex in Groves, and that's not a, that's not a knock on them, I mean, the Twenty-three Club, where the baseball done, cause they have the covers are great, I would like to see stuff like that for softball. I like to see those three fields that are on the east side of, uh, Oregon Trail Park, like those developed, so we can have more teams come in. Uh, because softball, those, those are, that board is amazing, they're doing great things. Um, and, but, that's why we see, and then once we get that infrastructure just a little bit more nailed down and, and really kind of see what is our mission statement, the stuff that huddles then, then really go look and see, okay, now we've gotta bring hard, just go get it right there.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, I, I guess, I, you know, we, we've got other business to take care of, right? So, it's supposed to start at four thirty, it's four forty-two. So, I, I just wanna leave you guys with this. Are Carla's wages worth the investment? Are Brenda's wages worth the investment? Are they busy? Are they, are they booked out? Can they find time in their schedule to create eight or twelve new tournaments?
Just one comment, you asked who, who did they report to? If you lodging tax for this fund, then it should be the tourism committee, cause the tourism committee is the committee that oversees the funds from the lodging tax, correct? By state statute.
We can go, we should, we should go over the statutes at another meeting, because I.
We don't have time tonight.
I, I'm just saying, because, you know, in state statute, if it's state statute that the tours, the committee or some type of commission is created to oversee the funds that are paid through county lodging tax, then, and you want county lodging tax to help pay for this, then it should be somehow run through your tourism committee.
Okay, I'm just gonna bring this up real quick.
I just, I, I mean, that's, they're, they're the ones that are charged to oversee how that is spent, correct?
They, they, they receive the funds, they oversee the funds, they distribute the funds until it reaches a certain point, and then it comes to us.
Okay.
Okay, I think ten thousand.
Here's the state statute. The governing body of the county shall annually set the budget, if any, under which the committee shall operate. So, we set, the, the commissioner set the budget, and then the committee spends the money.
And that budget nor.
It's, there's, there's levels.
And that budget is normally set, that budget is normally set on what the previous year's revenues were from, from the lodging tax.
We've taken a, I mean, this board has taken a very hands-off approach to that budget process. We've just said, hey, what'd you bring in last year, what are you bringing this year?
But if you're wanting to spend those funds, then it should be overseen by that same committee.
I think in the bylaws or in, I think ultimately this board has the, the final say. Like, I think in the state statutes, it asks for an advisory board, and there are specifications of who that will be made of. So, the, the statute, you need to go through an advisory board that makes the recommendation. At that point, you guys can, you guys can yea or nay, add more majority vote. But the purpose of the advisory board is to get a consensus of the professional tourism people that are on that board to make the recommendations. Um, if you're just gonna bypass all of that, you just as well dissolve the advisory board, and you guys can deal with it every month, all the people coming to ask for money. So, basically, we're doing the labor and listening to the, the people applying for the funds, and then we make the recommendation and, and it goes from there. But if you're, if you're gonna simply bypass it, we volunteer our time. Um, and that was my point of the question, what is the purpose of the advisory board? It's meeting the state statute, but ultimately you can make the final decision.
Yeah, a- and, I, I'm gonna try to wrap this up here, only because we have, not that it's not important, I, I, I think it needs a whole lot more discussion. Uh, and, and I, I, as I said earlier, I, I think the idea is fine, I have, anything that can bring anybody back here, cause those same kids that are here playing baseball, you know, may go to the gearing pool, or, or the parents are gonna go to Legacy, or whatever the case might be, so it's a win-win, it's a win-win for everybody. The logistics of it, I think, is, is what's going to be a little bit of a problem, uh, cause we, we're not sure how it's all gonna be put together. In, in my own personal opinion, I'd like to see it run in conjunction with, with the, the tourism committee and a, and a, uh, maybe even a separate committee, or whatever has to happen. Because we're, we're gonna, you're gonna be using tourism money to fund this individual, for one thing. Uh, and, and I, and I really think, the more people that are here, the more, I didn't do this, the more heads on beds, whatever it's called, is, is gonna, it's going to inflate that, that, uh, that, that, that money that we're going to be receiving. So, it may be kind of a wash here, if, if, if it's done correctly. They say, I don't have a problem, I think it needs a lot more work, I think it needs a lot more discussion, I don't think anybody's totally against it. I think we just need to, I don't think, I'm not speaking for the, my other commissioners here, as one, I'm not totally against it, I would just like to see it done correctly and a little more, a little more talking and, and putting it together with the, with the help of the tourism board and, and, uh, to see how, to see how it all comes together, I don't think it's a bad idea, I really don't.
And maybe walking in, Charlie, and I was speaking, what I was saying to the board is that it would be nice to have you come to the board and have us work out the logistics, and instead of jumping straight to this board, and so that was my only comment that I was speaking about. So, maybe a good way to proceed, cause it sounds like there's people on the board that think it's a great idea. Come to the, come to the, to our board, let's, let's work out the logistics and then bring it to your board with our recommendation.
So, yeah, and I, I had a feeling this would come up, and the reason we're here tonight is because this is the third commissioner's meeting of the month. We got a fifth Monday, so we're here for a work session, typically, we only meet twice a month. Um, tourism committee only meets once a month. Um, I wanna see this thing drive forward. And so, I, I can't wait thirty days between meetings, you know, so if we can, if we can talk every other week, I think that's great. Brenda and I have been talking and meeting and, and with, with Lisa for, you know, multiple times, lots of communication over this. Um, I wanna drive this thing forward, like, I, government moves slow, and this is, this is economic development, this is, this needs to move quickly. And, and I know these two are, are, they're at their, their, their bandwidth this far. And, and if, if someone, someone's gotta run this thing across the line. And, and I, I all admit, I, I am not the, the guy to get down in the weeds and figure out exactly how this is gonna work out. I, I am not the, the guy to get down in the weeds and figure out exactly how this is gonna work out. I'm, I'm more of a visionary. I don't, I know I, I'm not the lawyer who's gonna pencil out who answers to who and, 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 or, or the accounting person that's gonna get this all ironed out. But, this is what I wanna see drive forward. And that's why I put it here at the commissioner meeting. It was a workshop, you know, so. Um, I did invite Nate, and I really wanted him to talk about his experience working with sports commissions. Um,
I, I mean, I, I don't, I think this is quite, quite kept, that I think that the overall idea of this is a great idea. Um, there's, there's a lot of ins and outs in this community with, uh, with, you know, like I said, the river. Um, I, I think this is, is a good idea. I would, I would love to see. I personally, when I go to a tournament, I'm coaching, um, so I don't know what the sports commission does. I, I can't speak to that all the time. Um, I know that tourism boards, the Black Hills and, and the Front Range provide a lot of opportunities for those tournaments. Um, so, I, I think it's, uh, again, I, I'm, I'm kinda with everybody else. I think, I think this is a great idea. Um, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, kind of denouncing those.
I, I, I'll leave you, I wanted to leave you with one thought about, you know, these two tourism directors. Um, leave you with one more. So if you could, oh, then, you know, the month of September, October, you could drive by the soccer complex on Saturday, and imagine all those cars coming here, more weekends out of here. I think, I think that's what we could.
Drive by the automobile park.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Charlie, for the information. Uh, with everybody's permission, I'd like to do just a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back and, and pick up where we need to be. Okay?
Well, you know. Does mine work? It should.
You'd like to do what?
Tell you why, cause I was just messing with my spreadsheet, and I wanna save it.
Uh, do you guys want to, uh, hold off on the appointments until the end?
Sure.
We don't have to keep everybody here?
No, I, I want you to get it done so that I don't have to stay too long.
Well, you shouldn't, you shouldn't stay too long. Uh, let's, uh, with everybody's permission, let's move on to board of equalization, and we'll get Robert done. So I need a motion to move into board of equalization, please.
Motion to go into board of equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
You're gonna have to wait, cause I thought we needed to call back into session, so hang on. There you go. Russ and Ken?
No.
No.
You and Ken.
No, I'm, I'm taking them.
Did you get it?
Oh, it's not me. I hit it once.
Well, I can't see that.
Okay.
Where that, that light?
Back up here for you.
Uh, it was Deborah up here.
Yes, I was. This thing? Okay.
Okay.
Forever.
Robert?
Best of luck.
Good evening, gentlemen. I believe everybody received from Kelly a copy of the clerical errors report. It's a basically report to, uh, fix some things from our under-over that we discussed from, uh, two weeks ago.
Well, I can't hear you that way.
I'm too tall, I guess. Let me just bend over here. So thi- this is a clerical errors report that I discussed with the board, uh, that I'd be presenting. Uh, these are basically, uh, clerical errors that I mean corrected, except for the last five items. Three of those are lure items that didn't get rolled onto the twenty-twenty-four tax roll properly. And then there were two, uh, appraisals that were accepted by the assessor's office last year that didn't stick, and we're fixing those as well.
I, I counted your deals. You have, uh, seventy-eight overs and ninety-nine unders, so there's seventy, seventy-something are gonna be complaints filed.
I can't hear you.
I said there are seventy-seven, seventy-eight overs and ninety-nine unders, so there's actually more unders on this than there are overs.
Number-wise, that's correct. So, I said number-wise, yes. Not dollars, but.
But we don't know that, that those will actually protest.
That's right.
They'll receive the report and, and make a decision.
Yeah, many of them won't, because it's going down.
Within this thirty days, whether they wanna protest or not.
That's right, that's right.
We just need to accept these tonight, is that where you're at?
That's right, and we'll send the notices out tomorrow.
And let me be sure I understand, then, these are different than the ones that you did a week ago?
They're all identical, except for the last five. These are correcting, because there was a clerical error when they went, when the, my, uh, office went to print those off.
Okay.
So, they're identical, except for the last five.
Okay.
So how many did you have on the, on the, uh, the last one we shipped out? How many did, we approved? How many did you have on that?
Uh, it was probably around three fifty, three seventy-five.
That's what that, that's where that three hundred. That's where, so we're gonna, we could still have a house full.
Some of those lower, though.
That's right, that's right. We've had nine, uh, people come in so far. I think nine is the number. Yeah, so, not too bad.
That's what you told me last time. We had, you had seventy-five, and then when we came here was nine hundred.
I never said seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the over and under evaluation.
I approve that we approve the over-under evaluation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Okay, I need a motion to come out of board of equalization.
I'd like a motion to come out of board of equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay. Lisa?
Any member could've signed that, huh? I think so. I think any member could've signed that. Cause we voted to do that. It's not just into the pretty face. Okay. Uh, discuss, consider bid awarding from Scottsdale County Audit. Lisa?
I can, uh, pull the information up on the computer to look at with you. So I'm hoping you, Kelly should've put the information in your packets.
We have it.
And part of the bid proposal, well, we received one bid. Dana Cole returned back with another bid, and Kevin Sylvester, obviously. So, that we can either select a three-year or a five-year. And I gave you what? What we, what was brought to us three years ago, as far as bid proposals back then, and we selected three.
The last payer.
Where, yeah, we just had twenty-twenty-three audit completed, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Plus, if we have a, a single audit, which is a, they do a separate audit when we receive federal dollars, is an additional. Then it was three thousand. Now, this year, we're looking at six thousand for every total audit.
Just doubled then, didn't it?
Anyways, it appears the expenses have gone up significantly to where, to do the twenty-twenty-four audit, thirty-five thousand for the first year, thirty-six thousand five for the second year, thirty-eight thousand. And then, if we go with option two, which of, two, just go with Dana Cole for five years, it starts at thirty-four thousand, then to thirty-five thousand two hundred, thirty-six thousand four hundred for twenty-twenty-six, thirty-seven thousand six hundred for twenty-twenty-seven, and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred for twenty-twenty-eight. And, like I noted in the print at the, at the bottom, we do have, have to do a single audit, because we receive federal funds. Um, typically, lately, they've been auditing the transit bus system. That's federal dollars, eighty percent of operating. That's six thousand dollars in addition to the fee that's being proposed.
This is the second time in a row that we've only gotten one bid.
It's got some. What's that?
I'm gonna say it's getting harder and harder to find.
This, the state audit, the state auditor's office is pulling out of doing county audits, and there are a lot of counties that are having a horrible time trying to find auditors. And there are also a lot of the auditors that some of the smaller counties are around here, and they're retiring. So, um, there just really aren't a lot of options for counties right now with the audits.
Professional services.
How many hours do you think Dana Cole spends on our audit?
Well, I have no idea, but I think they go and they put that in the projection in here. He did say this year, he spends lot, they spend a lot less time onsite, because, just, you know how it is. If I can sit at my desk and have two, three screens, I am a lot more efficient than trying to toggle between screens on a laptop, sitting here. So, they come and get what they need, and they take their work back with them. So.
We have a chance to email to give them a lot more of our, like, center, you know, stuff with these, stuff that they couldn't look up by hand. You can send them.
And setting up our fund help as well, with most of our occupations in town now, and it's all run through, have those opposite health offices, so I can actually scan and upload emails and post the stuff they do as well. More efficient for me.
And I was gonna say, and even with the, the federal audit portion, like, are the, I mean, when, anytime we spend more than five hundred thousand dollars in federal money a year, we're retired to get a federal audit. And so that's, that's where we, we will definitely be in the public.
Right.
Lisa, on the final page there, that was the, the last audit, we only did the three years, is that what we did?
We only did, we only selected three years back then.
Oh, that would've probably been a good time to stay with it for a while.
Hindsight's twenty-twenty.
Hindsight's so good.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty.
Can we actually, uh, do that? Approve somebody to work for, for three years and not, not bid it every year? Are we able to do that?
Yeah, our, our bid with bytes is five years at a time.
Oh.
Well, and this is what we requested of them. I mean, this has been the ongoing audit proposal.
How long are the, uh, food contracts and the health nursing contracts at the jail? Are they a year at a time, or?
That's to you, Mark. I don't, I don't look.
Um, usually, we, we have a contract for a year or two, with some renewals built in that we can reject or accept.
So if we, if we accept it for five years, are we guaranteed five years of audits? Cause I, from what I hear out here, is, is that's really the risk, is that we come back with no auditor.
And I, I would say, if, in this completely my opinion, I would say that if they want to sign a five-year contract with them, I'd take them up on it. And, you know, and they're not, you know, a lot of the auditors who have to be states, out of those, to do county audits, a lot of them are older, like, smaller companies, and those people are just retiring. But there are counties, um, like in the eastern part of the state, that are having to go outside of Nebraska to actually find people to come in and do their audits for them.
And, and even the ones that we have here are booked. You can't get them. The aging office uses a, a, a accounting company, I think, out of Grand Island or somewhere. And they wanted to go to Dana Cole, and Dana Cole couldn't take them. They were,
Can't believe it.
They just didn't, they didn't have the staff and the time to do it. Uh, and it, it makes it kinda tough when we have audits, or we have any issues, everything has to go back east in order to, to be looked at. And I think, uh, uh, just lost the name. Used to work for him. I'm on the board. Uh,
Kaplan.
Kaplan, Jamin at Christmas. Uh, Kaplan uses, uh, some auditor from, I have, I think St. Louis or somewhere. Uh, cause they can't, and, and maybe they haven't tried, but I know, but, uh, anyway.
Well, and our, and Dana Cole is also not just in Scottsdale, because like they use any other audits and it's tied to.
Oh, yeah.
So I would think that if you sign a contract with them, I mean, it might not have anything to explain them, but it would be somebody from your whole.
I, I agree, and that's what, um, I think I had to say, is that, again, you're dealing here with a company that's large, and even if they had to bring in people from outside our community, they would bring them in enough to help do the audit. Or, again, do it from their desk, wherever. Um, but they are a large enough firm, in my opinion, that the five-year, um, agreement is not critical. It'd be a whole lot different if we were dealing with a firm with one or two CPAs in an office, um, that had no other affiliated offices anywhere. Um, that I think then you would have, uh, uh, a lot greater risk. I know our, um, accounting firm, which is, uh, Lockwood or Troy Hilliard now, they were just bought out by a company in Minneapolis, I think, or somewhere up that way.
F B G or something?
And I think they're large, um, but apparently, um, didn't bid, so.
Well, we saved just about four thousand dollars in the first three years by going with option two, and I think it, you know.
You wanna make a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion, we accept option number two for audits.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Sorry, I'm behind you. Okay.
Okay, there you go, Lisa. Thank you.
You don't have to, I probably maybe put it together, but I don't have a copy of it with me.
I just copied it, I didn't look at it.
I.
Okay. All right, next item discussed, an approved food service agreement with the Trinity Service Group Inc. versus Scottsdale County Detention Center. Sheriff?
This is just, uh, the, the, the final contract. I briefed you on this, uh, at the last meeting, or maybe a couple of meetings ago, and it's, it's a significant savings over what we had. So, they've actually sent us the contract, and we, there were, there were some things in it that we tweaked a bit, and they were receptive to all of our suggestions, and it just, a lot of it had to do with, uh, how we pay them, and when they pay them, and how our process works. They wanted to be paid, like, in two weeks, and we can't, and we asked them for thirty days, and, and they said, yeah, that's fine. Uh, we just, the way our, the way our claims process works, that would, that, that wouldn't have been worked, and, uh, that wouldn't have worked, and they weren't, wanted to charge us extra. Uh, but, uh, we're very confident that we can get them paid in thirty days, and so they accepted it, so we just ask you for your signature.
I, I did get a report from one of our guests that were in there, and they weren't real thrilled about the food, and I reminded him that it wasn't the Holiday Inn Express. Whatever, yeah. But, uh, we do, we do the very best we can.
If, if the food gets bad, we hear about it right away.
I'm, I'm assuming you do, yeah.
So as long as it's acceptable, uh, but there, there have, there have been, there have been some times, as I'm sure Mr. Blue knows, where the, where the kitchen fails. And if they fail, we're gonna have upset people, and they let us know, and then, and then we let our vendor know. Because if it's unacceptable to those folks, then it's unacceptable to us too. It's not supposed to be, uh, like restaurant food, but it's, it's supposed to be acceptable. Good food.
So, but they're not doing it yet.
No, September first, I think. In, in fact, they're supposed to be here for a walkthrough next week.
So whatever complaints we had would've been on the old.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if, if our, if our guest wants to go back.
And I would take that with a grain of salt, by the way.
Yeah.
Trust me.
If our guest wants to go back, tell him that we'll have a new vendor. He can try it again.
It may have an opportunity. We'll see what happens. All right. Thank you, Mark. Do I have a motion to approve, or did we do it already?
We have not. I make a motion to approve the, uh, new, uh, food vendor.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, record your votes. Okay, uh, Okay. Uh, let's very quickly go-
Uh, let's very quickly go over our, our, uh, commissioner appointments, we get that done and out of the way. The only thing we're gonna do here is just assign or ask for vote, yes.
I have it for you guys to review them and take action on the fifth, is that okay? I don't have, okay.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'll just go down the list. Uh, the airport authority at this point does not have a, a, an al- alternate, anybody interested in doing that?
New, or, excuse me, nine thirty in the morning, nine thirty.
I can, I can do that if anybody.
I don't, I haven't, I don't think I've missed one yet, but anyway, no, that's fine if you want to.
Is anybody else interested? Okay, I, I can be the alternate on that one. Ability Utilization Committee, that's an at-will, I don't know that. I don't know that we really need one for that one. Communications Board, Advisory Board. Blue's the commissioner for that one. It's a quarterly meeting. Do we think, you think you need a?
It's like at three o'clock, isn't it?
Yeah, three thirty.
You think we need an alternate for that one?
I'll do that one if, um, it's an alternative, if you want me to.
All right. Gearing Valley Flood Control, that meets biannually, I'm guessing you can make all of those, Russ?
I do.
Okay. Uh, Panhandle or Pad, we already have an alternate on that one. Uh, Community Action Partnership, we have no alternate. Anybody, and the only thing I would say about that one is that if you've not been to a meeting or haven't attended the meetings, uh. I've, I've lost my words again, I'm sorry. If you have not attended enough meetings to know what they're talking about, you can get lost very easy, very easy. I've been on her for, I don't know, a couple, three years and there's still things that I'm still trying to figure out. It's, it's a very complicated board and it, uh, so I would, I would say that just having somebody show up because I couldn't be there, uh, probably, probably not gonna be.
I can't do it.
Yeah, and that meets at night.
When I was an alternate to the Health Board, I just came to the meetings from the beginning when I first got appointed to that spot. Just so I knew what to expect in the future if I was needed.
So if, unless somebody is really anxious to go, and I know you're not.
They'd be better off unserved, probably.
Probably, and I, and I make, I make most of those, I have, I don't miss many of those. The Region One Board, uh, I said on that one, again, that, that's another one that if you're not kinda keeping up with what's happening, attending one board meeting, I don't know is gonna.
I don't think they're all that way, kinda of.
Well, they're, they're.
Yeah, but do you have an alternate for that one?
No.
Uh, no.
Don't we still need alternates, no matter what?
You can put me on there as an alternate.
As an alternate?
On Region One?
Because I was the representative for a while and I.
They meet at eleven thirty.
I understand how it goes, so.
And you're talking Region One, right?
All right.
Behavioral Health.
Okay, uh, Region One Office of Human Development, same, same deal, they meet at one thirty on the same day.
Like following that other meeting?
Following that other meeting, yes.
They try to run it so that you can go from one to the other.
Charlie, you wanna do that one too? Uh, Panhand Development Disabilities, I think you're on that one, that meets annually.
Yeah, I'm, uh, and I've never been contacted to go to a meeting, I don't know that they meet.
Okay, well, let's, let's just leave that as it is then. Uh, Scottsburg Drain?
That's me and Steve, I would just tell you that I have, um, I maybe have attended one time, um, but I never get notices. Um, I have no idea when they meet, um, and so if you get a notice, let me know.
Yeah, then we'll, usually it's once a year and it comes from, um, the ass.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're okay with that?
You don't need, you don't need an alternate on that one then.
Okay.
Anybody's.
You can put me down if you want to.
You want, you wanna be an alternate on that one, Russ?
Could be, yeah.
Okay. The Merit Commission, I'm, uh, let's see, I think, Mark, you're the alternate already on that one. Tourism Committee, um, I would, unless somebody else wants to, I could be the alternate on that one if you can't make the meeting. Unless somebody else is interested in doing it. I don't mind it, uh, in my, my schedule, or my workload is I could, I can get off and talk to my boss and get off in the afternoons, see what happens. Uh, Weed Control Authority, says occasionally.
Well, we do that occasionally, like every time we talk, we visit about that.
So you're all right with that?
Uh, no, that's fine if anybody wants to add on to that.
Anybody wanna go to that or, and, and another one could even go and sit in on the meetings if you wanted.
Really isn't a meeting, we really.
Didn't she used to have a weed control board, I mean, that's.
I think it dissolved, that's all it's all.
Yeah, that's, that's no longer.
I think we investigated that we had one and then it became this board.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are the Weed Control Authority.
Well, Steve and I pretty much touch base.
Is anybody else interested in attending that with Russ or in Russ's, uh, absence? I have not, we'll move on to County Personnel Board. Uh, Mark, you're on it, and Mike, you're the alternate, okay? Uh, Sarah, Title Three, Charlie, you're on that one.
What exactly is that?
It's a hazardous materials mitigation, so if there's an accident or something, then we're, we'll see, we'll oversee it.
Okay, I don't know. That's a quarter, that's a quarterly meeting. Anybody interested in wanting to be an alternate on that?
I'll be the alternate.
I was gonna say, Mike Blue's not the alternate, oh, right.
Okay, the Housing Authority Board, uh, Mike's the representative. Anybody wanna be the alternate on that one?
What time do those meet?
Uh, they usually meet at, uh, I think, uh, noon.
Right at twelve.
What day of the month?
I believe it's Tuesday.
It's first Tuesday.
First Tuesday?
I think so, first Tuesday.
Mapping Committee, that says as needed.
We have an alternate?
We do have an alternate on that one. County Safety Committee, uh, Mike's the representative. I can, I can be the alternate on that one, that's no problem. Uh, Cyrus House Board of Directors is annual meeting, no, monthly meeting. Russ, you go to that one, right?
Yeah, I go to that every month.
Okay, do we have anybody interested in being the alternate on that one?
I'd be the alternate.
Good.
Okay. Morale County Extension Board is a monthly meeting. Mike, you're doing that now?
Yep.
Anybody wanna jump on with that one?
I could be an alternate on that.
Okay. We have an alternate on the Regional Governance Board, uh, Twin Cities Development, uh, Information System Committee, that's as needed. Charlie's doing that one. Anybody else interested?
That one meets quarterly.
Okay, it just says that, it just says as needed on Mike.
No, I, I would encourage another commissioner to come to those. I, I talk with, I don't always go to those meetings, there's probably been a while since I've been there, but I talk with Bytes. Probably once a week anyway, um, if not just twice a month. Um, but I do think it would be helpful for another commissioner to go to those meetings. Just to get a more, a more, a better understanding of, of what, what the IT committee was charged with.
I could, I could do it, I would understand a lot what's going on, but I'd be more than happy to attend, I don't have a problem.
Um, does anyone else have any input on that one, I mean?
I mean, another commissioner on that, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, everybody, I think with that committee, the nice thing about it is that everybody is kind of, you know, you get ideas, you're thankful, so.
Is anybody else interested in doing that? All right, I'll do it.
Okay.
Corrections Department, we got an alternate, Region Twenty Two Management. Uh, Blue is the, anybody interested in being the alternate on that one?
Which one?
The Region Twenty Two Management Board.
It's a really big board.
What do they meet?
Uh, usually it's Thursday, third week at nine thirty.
I think they're gonna be a quarterly, or as needed, aren't they, Mike?
Well, they could do, I could do that one.
You wanna do that one, Russ?
Right now you are, but you should.
Okay. Uh, Panhand of Public Health, we already have an alternate.
Did we get an alternate?
Yes, Russ.
Thank you.
Uh, Panhand of Public Health, we have one, the last one's the Heartland Express Association.
I'd like to do that one too, if I can.
All right, Russ, you're on. Okay, we got him.
Okay, I have a question, do you want me to get this typed up this way for action then on our next meeting, okay?
Yes, please. Please. Okay, uh, now we're down to general discussion. Who, who would like to start, anybody?
Um, I just had a couple of things, the, uh, with the Health Department and the position there, um. And we were talking about Building Utilization Committee and I just was thinking, is that office going to be vacant in the next twelve months?
We've got some decisions to make with that.
Yeah, okay.
Cause the Health Department is pretty much dissolved, we were, um.
Why is your microphone clear up there?
I don't even know, I didn't realize it's mine until, literally. Um, anyway, they had a grant, that's why we kept that position, that half of that position was involved with Health, Health Department and doing the stepping on and, gosh, what, what. Some balance and coordination for seniors that we were, we had, we would either had to give up the grant or continue on till September thirtieth. That is the last of the grant. So that'll be, and this person is also Health Department and was relief and aid. And then this has also been my floater that we've sent around to different departments to assist when they're needing, when they're needing somebody to help in the Veterans Office. Or she just spent a week helping in the Mapping Department. And anyway, I think I've talked to you a little bit about the relief aid, I don't know, we need to have some discussions on that. I don't know if you wanna have it here, whether it's something we need to look and see if there's alternatives. And then that happening, then yes, the office, like, right now, there's still a person in there.
Right, and, but did she, did she have a date in mind for retirement or, or we, she wants to stay on as floater, find something else, I guess, I don't remember.
If we would hold a position for floater, she would love it.
Yeah.
I just need to make sure I'm keeping that position busy enough.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, no, she has never given a date.
Okay.
And last I heard, I thought it was get through this and then it was, oh, maybe in a year or two.
Okay. Well, I, I ju, I think if it's, you know, it's a great space, it's a large space, I don't know that it's the best utilization for one person who floats between departments. Especially if she can office in those departments while she's there. And it's, it's a tremendous space.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason I, I bring it up is, um. There's, uh. Well, I'll, I'll leave that alone, I guess, but, um, um. Yeah, I just thought if we needed space, then, then that would be the office that would be next, next to open up. I know typically, you know, when we did the Assessor and the Mapping Department moves, thinking about all that kinda stuff, um, you know, some commissioners went around to look. I don't know if we could go look over there, um, just, I mean, have you guys ever been over there?
Into the Health Department?
You, you walked right past it when you go to, when you go to map.
Oh, I do, yeah, I know. I've been in it when they were in the moving phase or whatever.
Okay, yeah.
All right, I'll ask again, anybody?
I have a question. Kurt, I wanted to go about restoring some vehicles, I wanted to ask the sheriff that, the whole horse line we have out there, do you have room for a couple of vehicles?
I'll have to check.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see. Cause with the lead times we're experiencing on vehicles, I've got the six coming in, I'm planning, I know we've one, I'm gonna retire, possibly two. Um, but we're trying to keep extra backups because of the maintenance issues and delay, you know, we're still struggling with lead times on parts and things like that. And it would also possibly allow us to, um, possibly look at other options for shops, the shop we use gets us in and out. But there's a premium price for that at times, um, so I could look at possibly looking at some other options for some maintenance on those vehicles if we have backups. That we, we've got a little more time to have those out of service, but right now, we have to get them back in service as quickly as we can. And I'm just, I'm, the barn's full, we're out of space and.
So you need two vehicles?
Two to four. It could, it could be the cutaway buses, it most likely would be, would be as those buses we have.
Okay.
But, um.
Why don't, why don't you work with Mark and see what he's, see what he's got?
I'm just sending an email, my staff.
Okay.
And then the only thing I have, and this is on a personal basis, is working with Matt in the Veterans Service Office, um, staff's doing a great job. Um, he's getting busier, guys, and, um, you know, he has the agreement with Kimball County and Banner County. And, um, I think it's, it's, if he continues to bring in the, the, uh, the benefits, um, that he's bringing in and the dollars he's bringing in for the vets here. I think, uh, if the budget allows, obviously, I think it, it might be time to start looking at, um, getting in some additional help, possibly a vehicle with the miles he's put on his, but a deputy. Because, you know, and I need to get in to see him, it's hard, he's, he's that busy and, um, he's doing a great service for the veterans in the, in the community here and I, I. Yeah, I think it'd be something that would be beneficial and I think your, especially your veteran constituents would, would definitely appreciate having easier access to a, to a VSO or a deputy. So just that's my personal experience with him, and he's doing a heck of a job, so.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
Steve, do you have any room or room to? He asked me about that and I didn't think so, but I wanted to get it, get it from you.
Yes, you please.
I might, I might, uh, mention a couple of things, I know some of the people here are about the solar, uh, subject. And so let me tell you what I know of and we kinda need to make a decision. So I spoke with Bill Maven, Bill Maven and Phil Kelly, the attorney that we've asked to help, they've been working on the project. Um, they, um, have, um, put several of the, um, potential policy and regulation ideas into writing. Um, they're ready, um, they're still working on it, but they're ready to report to us. When I talked to Bill, he said that Phil Kelly is gonna be gone on the fifth, that's our next meeting. He said he could come and make a presentation without Phil if we wanted it, or, um, if we wanted both him and Phil, we would need to wait till the nineteenth. And so I told him that I would ask this group and decide, um, uh, what we thought we wanted.
I'd like to have both of them.
I know that's what we've said all along, is.
Bill, that's who's working on it, I mean, that'd probably be a lot more productive.
Does Bill have enough information, they could speak for the information that he's received from Phil?
Um, I think, uh, again, he could update us, uh, somewhat as to where they're at. Um, if we got, I guess, whatever give and take we have with Bill, I'd really like for Phil to hear that.
Well, I think so too.
And, um, that's what I'm thinking, is that even if Phil didn't say anything, whatever give and take that's here and the, from the audience, that Phil needs to hear those things.
That's fine.
And he's out of town on the fifth.
Well, then let's, let's do it for the next, the next agenda.
In the, in, in the interest of time, is it appropriate for us, for Phil to share with us what they have so far? Individually, we could email back and forth with Phil, or do we need to receive all this information?
I think, I think Phil should just be here and present what they have and what direction they're headed. It's not a secret, so we can, you know, we know, get it out there.
If anybody, I know, Russ, you were discussing other things with Phil and the subject came up. Um, so to the extent that it, um, was, uh, how do I wanna say, kept to real specific, I think, kind of a minimum, I think it'd be all right. But whatever ideas that you have or anyone else, again, I think it would just be good for Bill and Phil to hear them at the same time. Um, and I'd love for them to hear it direct from you. And, um, then these folks would also be hearing it at the same time and I, with everybody, um, and I, I was hoping we could get it done on the fifth, but we can't.
Yeah, he was gonna be gone till the twelfth.
So can he, can he email that stuff to us in advance for us to have time to review to bring our questions to that nineteenth meeting?
All right, what you're thinking. All right, what you're thinking.
Oh, good.
That, I can sure mention it to him.
Okay.
Okay.
So anyway, that's where we're at. They've been working on it and, um, we should be able to give some serious information, uh, then at that meeting of the nineteenth. So we want to be sure and get that all done.
A few where I haven't heard.
The agenda.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Charlie?
I'll have some more later, but we keep going around the table.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, finish what you got.
On the solar, on the solar news, I do have, um, LB thirty-five was introduced, uh, Friday, I believe. Uh, LB thirty-five is to increase the nameplate capacity tax, which is that tax that's, uh, attached to each megawatt of electricity produced by renewable energy. Um, currently sits at three thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars a megawatt. The bill that was introduced says, um, will take inflation and add it to that number. Um, and that, that three thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars was adopted in two thousand twelve. So that, so move it, move it with inflation, um, that, that's what was introduced. Of course, those things often do change through the course of debate on the end committee and on the floor of the legislature. Um, so we had a call, the NACO board had a call yesterday, uh, to talk about all the bills that had been introduced in the special session. And that was, uh, the main one that I latched on to. Um, other, some other bills, you guys probably read about them in the news, that NACO, just to let you know, the NACO board decided to take no position on whether or not the governor should have to sell his plane to help pay for property tax relief. So, uh, but it sounds like LB one is the governor's bill and it's, I think it's dead on the right. But it's, it's, it's dramatic and it's, it's, uh, but there's, there's over eighty bills right now. As of yesterday afternoon when the NACO board met, there are over eighty bills and today they were still introducing bills. Um.
And the promising filibusters on a lot.
And, and, you know, you know, um, one guy's already made a motion to adjourn Siney Day, so it, it doesn't sound like they're making much progress there. I don't know if they'll make any progress during this special session. There were some bills that, that seemed legitimate. They just might have to wait till the next session. So, um, you know, I, I gave my two cents on the nameplate capacity tax. Um, I just, I just said, you know, it, it needs to, you know, let's look at it, you know, let's say, okay, what, you know, are we gonna put inflation and compound it every year from two thousand twelve until now? Is it just gonna be, we're just gonna figure out what the inflation rate was for that entire time period and add it on there? Um, there were, oh, the other thought there was, um, in that bill, they would say one hundred percent of that revenue would go to the counties. That the school districts, the cemetery districts, the fire districts would not receive any of that funding.
That would be just as bad as the schools getting it because we'd have a budget set and that would come right out of our budget. It would just lower our budget. It wouldn't be on top of our budget. It would come out of our budget.
That's one way to look at it, yep.
Well.
No, if you're gonna.
It should just, it would lower the taxpayer.
You gotta talk into your microphone because we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
No, that, yeah, that's one way to look at it, you know, unless they, unless they said, you know, they could add this to the bill that said that money can only be spent on infrastructure or that money could only be spent on.
Be great. I mean, we're good.
You know, I, that would be di- I could digest that, you know.
If that would happen.
Uh, that'd be one, as it sits now, that'd be one point four million dollars to do Stigl Road.
Or a lot of things we could do a lot of.
Per year, fifteen years as a paper.
For the next ten years. For the next ten years, it'd make a big difference.
You know, maybe it would go, you know, if, if some of these commissioners from Douglas County get their way, they could, they would earmark it all for mental health. You know, so, so it's, it's, it's on the floor or it's in committee now, so we'll see where it goes.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, anything else, Charlie?
I was gonna add, tourism does pay the legacy of the planes six hundred dollars a month in rent on top of what they get, uh, when they apply for grant money. So Brenda's got an office out there. It's not really a place for the public to interface with the tourism director. It's more of a storage facility for a lot of her stuff. Um, there is a, a kiosk there that does interface with the public, but, um, you know, if, if, if the legacy needed that space, you know, this, this space could be available for her or, or maybe, you know, if, if we were gonna ramp up staff one way or another, you know, to a, to a, because she's not really there. She's, she's out and about so much that it's not really a, it's not really a public facing position, but if, if staff was to increase to where we had people to greet tourists, you know, there, there's, there's some other thoughts there, so, um. There was some talk about the indigent fund going to, having that be administered by Kaplan. Do we wanna chat about that or?
That's on my list as well.
Is that on your list?
Not that we're ready to make a decision on that, but I guess I'm a little interested in the history behind that and then, yeah, is that something that we need to do?
Well, first, do they want it? Will they do it? I mean, they, the Kaplan of Carney does it for Buffalo County.
Do they?
They pay like twenty thousand a year.
Maybe purchase trip tickets from us as well to give to folks who are without transportation, so maybe tickets for people that may.
Kaplan does that. You know, they, that's why I didn't want to sit in on their meetings, but, yeah, I know that they pay us emergency rent and a few things like that, so they're doing a lot of those same things and even probably to a greater extent than what we would. Um, uh, and I'm just trying to figure that out as well in my mind as to, is that something that, um, it's been done, I think, for a long, long, long time.
It's funded by Keno.
And so I'm just wondering, is that something that we need to do? I mean, i- it's a, it's a difficult, um, I hate the thought of trying to make the decisions on who gets money and who doesn't. You know, our church secretary has some funds that she can give out and.
But they've got a system, they've got a system over there for homeless or whatever, uh, that, that they use to determine what the individual, what the needs are and then whether or not the individual is deserving of whatever it is they're asking for. I think they'd have a better access to the need more than we would have to verify need.
Repetitive customers that just keep milking the system and go from one place to another to another and I don't know if they contact sometimes law enforcement as to whether or not there are any kind of people that, um, are wanted or whatever. I don't know. And I, um, I know there's many people that have a real need and I don't think any of us have a problem with them getting some help. You just don't want people abusing the system.
Right.
And it's not easy to figure that out.
What I'd suggest is maybe is a meeting between you and I and Betsy. I'm the representative from the board and just toss it out and see what, what she thinks about it. Would that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay.
Probably pretty smart.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that and at least, at least get the discussion going and, and I'm sure she'd have to take it to the board, get permission to do that.
Now, Kaplan has a really good system. When we used to do the food bank over here in Gary, uh, they helped us set up a, a system where we could track people. And they were only allowed to come in once a month to get food items and they would, they would coordinate that so they could keep track of where they'd been and so they'd make sure that stuff wasn't wasted, so it's really a good system.
Somebody was talking about trying to watch that, all of these similar agencies doing the same thing and putting together a database, but.
Yeah, we have a database.
But I can't remember who.
Cap, Kaplan runs it.
Yeah.
No, but who said that?
I might have brought, yeah, I might have brought it up.
Okay.
Couple of different times, but.
It works pretty good.
Yeah, okay, we'll, uh, we'll pursue that. I'll, I'll give, okay.
Okay.
Can I talk about budget?
Yeah, are, are we?
Can I, or you want to finish your other?
Yeah, rather than just jumping or jumping around, do you have more to do here, Mark? Do you have?
I have a couple more items. Um,
And, and then we'll.
So the river bridge update, um, they started today, um, the streets closed, the bridges closed going northbound. I, I would tell you that I was just in the hallway, you know, at break time and someone asked me, um, yeah, but couldn't we keep um, traffic going in the other two lanes, both directions?
Normally they do. That's what they used to do.
And so, um, they asked that question. Um, the only thing I see is traffic control and some things would be a big mess. But, um, anyway, the thought being that this particular project is gonna be shorter than the one across and so anyway, I'm just, uh, for you guys, just throwing it out at you and, um, that, uh, somebody mentioned it to me. Said they did it before.
I know they've done it before.
You're right. So, um, I would mention that.
It was that, yeah, it was that years ago when those traffic counts compared to today's traffic counts are comparable. Today's, you know, ten driving people out.
We, well, I, I would only say that traffic counts maybe is more, but with all the bridges we have now at, I remember back in the seventies and, um, that bridge was virtually the only option to get across. And you had people, I, I know of people that they went through Mitchell Pass and come around to get, um, to avoid, um, having to go through the two lane. And I know at one point in time that that was the busiest street in town, um, and going across the bridge, but I just assumed that the extra bridges that have been put in now, I thought maybe some of that was minimized, um, from the extra bridges, but I don't know. You know that better than I do. I'm only throwing it out and you can take it from there.
I think in a few days when they get used to that.
I think it's just all about the safety of the construction workers out there too and the intersection of the YMCA. You know, we have two other perfectly good routes to get over there. Easy to get to, you know, you have a normal way right out here.
Right. Right. We have bridges that are closer.
Cut across, uh, W Y, five rocks, so.
Mark, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'll get you a minute, Gene. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
So, I had a lot of notifications I needed to be in to stop them today and I started down there and I saw, I saw the detour sign. I said, okay. So I went around and I can tell you that traffic is choked up at, on the Avenue Y side. This was around noon. So, and it was choked up this morning when I came to work too. So there's, so there's a lot of traffic, but we've got to fix the bridge. And I thought about, I, I thought about letting the two-way, um, traffic on that, on that bridge. But I think about that YMCA intersection and how you would have to reset all that and I think it's a mess and I think we're doing it the right way. And so people, everywhere you go, people are impacted by construction and I, I, I don't think we should change a thing.
I agree. I think it's, it'll, it'll work itself through.
Yep.
Gene?
They'll figure it out.
So we forgot that, you know, it was going on, so we headed over to Scotts Club out around there. And I would just have two suggestions for whatever traffic control knowledge I know. If you could put the road closed sign rather than the roadwork ahead before you get to Country Club and a detour pointing to Country Club because we witnessed a semi going straight, just said roadwork ahead and he'd already committed to the intersection and was beyond. So he was turning onto Terry Holabart off of Tenth Street and then going along the Canal Road, which no one should be allowed to make a left-hand turn from on that road. And that was backed up to Terry Holabart and Highway seventy-one was just impacted in what I think of is if there's a truck coming north on seventy-one and they go through the lights and they come down that hill, they can't see that traffic is backed up. Are they, if he's loaded, are they gonna be able to stop? And that's what I, so. Well, I know you're not, but that out-of-town truckers have no idea and when it just says roadwork ahead.
I, I ran that same thing and I got, I had to go to the bridge and turn around. If we get big trucks in there, they're gonna have to turn around that motel.
There's a, there's a detour sign right at Country Club.
I've seen that, yeah.
Okay, was that up this afternoon?
That was the first thing this morning it said.
We did not see that. It just said roadwork.
And there's a detour ahead sign back by Midwest Auto. It says detour ahead. There's a roadwork ahead sign back that way. You get to Country Club in there. There says roadwork ahead and detour. And there was going around and detouring. So if they go on up there, I guess, you know, that's.
I missed it. Yeah, I don't.
I did too. Can we close one of those lanes so they know that that is where they're running? Can there be just one of those lanes closed? One northbound?
I think they just really CSI did the, the traffic control for that part. I think the reason they left it open was just for deliveries for those businesses if they have.
Well, if you leave one lane open, we would.
They can easily take, they can easily turn it, both lanes open, whether that's seven one across and if there's cars headed south and trucks are gonna have a hard time making that turn with Country Club between the barricade and the deal, so that's what the barricades off to the side, being used what's called soft clothes until you get up to map the center which is the hard clothes to show. So.
You're not in a good position. I know.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll get plenty of opinions as you go along, but you guys, uh, I don't want to tell you exactly what's the perfect way of doing it, but when I hear stuff, I'll let you know.
Okay, you have anything else, Mark?
So I would suggest on that stable club drive. Um, if you're, you're on, no, if you are on, stable club drive headed towards seventy-one.
What's that? Depends, I gotta get some info on you.
Okay. We're just chit-chatting here, so we need, we need to keep moving.
So, I'll, um, so my other, last item is just, I, I seen Robert, um, had to get up and leave. But we still want to be sure that, um, we're planning a post-real estate tax protest meeting to go over again, what can we do to be better at what we were doing and on both sides and all sides and I know he plans to have that. We'll encourage when, him to be sure and that he's still planning that, so. That's it for me.
Lisa, go ahead.
Well, you have roughly four million dollars to find out of these budgets that I've turned in. This is like just giving you the proper tax ass stuff. And I need to know from you tonight, do you want books? Do you want books or can I give you my spreadsheets? But, you know, we do it online and that's just.
You know, I, this ruler works really well with the books.
You would like them?
I think the books are good.
Yeah, at least for, and then there are, there are always changes.
For those of you that have rumors.
But anyway, and I need to know some sort of structure, how we're setting up some meetings. Giving the quick, this is only property tax stuff I'm showing you tonight. And I don't, I don't have every budget out there because some of it doesn't involve property tax dollars.
Did you forget?
But look at the difference column because I, I'm showing you what was budgeted last year, what was budgeted this year. Expenses in the first two columns, revenue in the second, third and fourth column and then the tax ask. Expenses in the first two columns, revenue in the second, third, and fourth column, and then the tax ask. And then you can see the difference off to the right, and I highlighted some of the bigger ones and the percentage difference.
Are the wages built in?
Yes.
Okay.
Three and a half percent, it was pretty much.
I mean, the wage, the raises, okay, the raises, I meant to say.
I, hm? Oh, I did forget, Kelly, I'm sorry, and it was not intentional.
Okay.
And then, okay, the second page I handed you is just kind of my worksheet from Joy Plummer hearing I kept looking at the last couple of years. Updated with just making the property tax value or the real property value the same as last year, obviously you don't have that number yet. And I've s- I noticed tonight as I was sitting in here, there might be another number I need to update, but looking at, we know we can probably increase our spending by two percent over last year. Last year, our tax ask was thirteen million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, three nineteen. So, that plus the growth percentage around three hundred ninety-three thousand is pretty much what we, we can, it's gonna be in that range that we can increase our spending to not go to the pink postcard meeting. If we can't do that, then we go to the pink postcard meeting and ask, but then ask or to explain our, our needs. And then I also want to put, show you some of the levy creation for the last several years.
Okay, um.
Quick, please, I have extra sheets of the, the last one.
So just, just to clarify. You started off by saying we needed to find four million dollars.
Yep.
I can.
And that is based on last year's value.
That is based on, yeah, well, tax asking, twenty-three, twenty-four, we spent, we put out their tw- this is just the property tax piece, thirteen million, five twenty-four, and we're currently around seventeen million, so basically the difference, and we can grow by a cer- a very small bit, the difference in the second page is around four million dollars.
Well, there's a big bite in mapping there, you know, they had bought fifty thousand dollars worth of software last year and then training, and they've increased their budget. There's a big hoop in there somewhere.
The yellow ones are the big ones?
Yeah, I just, and some of the yellow ones I brought, I came to you just a couple of weeks ago and we put weed, relief and aid, and institutions into the general front, so that was just some changes I had to make with my spreadsheets too, that you're seeing. And, um, you're gonna spend more on weed control this year because, well, we're spending, we have different expenses, we aren't doing so much that's gonna be bringing money in.
Well, we weren't bringing money in anyway.
Yeah, we were, about eighty-two thousand last year.
You did eighty-two thousand dollars worth of contract work last year?
That's what was budgeted.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's what was budgeted.
He gave us a rebate at the end of the year, he gave us like fifty thousand off his deal, he told us, 'cause he wasn't gonna buy, wasn't gonna buy all that chemical.
Yeah, you guys took, the expenses off.
So that wasn't all, that isn't all income.
You don't have to look at the actual budget, I mean, if I could put it up here, I would, but we're not gonna, like, do the details.
What's broken?
What?
What's broken?
Now, the internet's all, the internet cord.
Well, we're not, we're not doing a budget hearing tonight anyway, we're just, you're just giving us a little overview.
No.
And I can give you, print off books and I can get them to you later this week, has that.
Uh, and we. We can, we can go into it.
I just wanna make a comment, how does, um, the treasurer was able to decrease her budget by three hundred twelve thousand, almost three hundred thirteen thousand, am I reading that right?
Um, well, you gotta kinda look at her as different, she's got a lot more revenue involved.
Okay.
But you just look at her expenses, expenses too. Just like.
Well, yeah, I, I just think that's a great example, I thi- I just think, what's that?
Money's just that good.
I, well, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm getting.
Interesting.
Maybe you should work on some of these other ones.
That's what I'm trying to, that's the point I'm trying to make here.
Yeah. Well, Robert came and chatted with me today, too, he's gonna do that big commercial real estate value thing. You guys probably know what I'm talking, reappraisal, sorry.
Reappraisal.
Yep.
And that's four hundred thousand dollars right there.
Maybe we could work on that next year.
And so he was looking for some negotiations and there's, I think he's got some points we can talk about. But anyways, that's the biggest portion of his interest.
Okay, and then you wanna know, when do we, when do we wanna start?
Gotta start very soon. As we've kinda brought it up and we were meeting out, leaving it out the last time I brought it up.
Do we wanna do it like we did last year, afternoon, early afternoon?
Well, if you could crank it out in a day or two, I think that would be fabulous, now, will that work? And.
You're talking full, full days.
Do you wanna see everybody?
I think anybody that's three and a half percent or lower, we, why would we wanna see them, I mean, that's what your increase is.
That's interesting.
That's a good point.
I, I would like you to pe- personally pat me and Heather on the back though.
Get over here.
Not now, when you see, when I present my budget.
Kelly's budget increased one point five six percent.
Thank you, Kelly.
My, uh, out of my control stuff though, I mean payroll is determined and I asked for less otherwise.
It is. I did not, I did not put your wage increases at this level.
Lisa, do you think we can do it in two days, two full days?
Depends on what you guys, for three and a half percent.
I'm confused, hold on, but everybody, so every, everybody else is?
Everybody else, they told us, I didn't put it in and I'm sorry, I could try to help you out, but I didn't get it.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm just making sure we're not in for a big surprise later.
I didn't get it. I didn't get it.
Okay, except for, I'm talking about the COLA they told us to work in, I worked in salary array, I worked in annual increase, second range.
You did all that, that's just, it's the COLA stuff, yeah.
I did that. No, the COLA, COLA is not in my budget.
That's what, so my, we'll have to look at those, so you can pat on the back, just still.
Okay.
But still, but still.
It must be a little. Anyway, if you can buy in a couple of days, wait, if you wanna meet with everybody that's increasing by three and a half percent or more, or maybe I can put that up here, maybe we'll.
Did, did one of our bonds drop off on that? Did one of our bonds drop out of here, 'cause it's less?
It's, you know, it's all about how much is in the fund.
Was that one?
As well, already, but yet we, we did, we, it's starting to show now that we pay out less for our bonds.
That's what it's looked like.
That the percentages are less and that we.
But are we retired, or have we?
Um, and we did pay one off.
Did we retire when this, couple of years ago?
That's in the last year.
But I see we've dropped down about, what, third?
Well, it went up a bit, but yeah, still just over a million this year was what it was.
Went up as well. Right, that looks like it went up.
Okay.
It went up.
But it would've, depending on what we started with and some of those things.
Yeah, that's, that would be my next question, is does this take in, into account cash, current cash on hand?
Down here at the bottom.
Which I will just say that current cash on hand right now, in my opinion, is just a little bit over because it seems like tax receipts are slower coming in right now.
Okay.
So, like, we really probably certainly see that much coming in for August yet, and August is your second, or it's actually the first half of.
Second half.
I, I get it mixed up.
A second half.
Would, would.
Yeah, second.
Second half.
Second half is one eighty.
It's, it's part of what you're budgeting, but it's based off of last year's valuations, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Really?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, our valuations go up. We've taken it to a point, people can't pay their taxes, possibly, quite possibly, what happens?
Maybe they love you for taxes and don't show up, you know, that's why, you look at some of these funds, we're in like four years and she's still collecting taxes for three, four years.
Mm-hmm.
The levy should go down this year.
But that's why we build a vision.
That de- but that depends on all, uh, all our other political subs.
That's right, if those subdivisions reach in and take all that increase.
We're, we're not the problem, I mean, we've, we've tried not to be.
No, we're not. But these schools reach in there before this can even settle, then, then they'll take that increase.
I.
That's why we also build a vision.
Right, I think regardless of what our valuation is, regardless of what our mill levy is, our spending ought to be in that two percent range, and that's what the pink postcard's all about. And as long as we stay in that two percent increase range, then I think we've done what we need to do. And, um, we're not in the pink postcard race and we're, um, that means ultimately that we're spending, um, only a minimal amount of increase. Most of you know the governor suggested that might go to zero percent in the future, I don't think it'll, it's gonna fly.
I don't know how it can happen.
Except for exemptions for law enforcement and companies.
Yeah, there's some exemptions, so, um, we just mentioned that, but if we, regardless of valuation, regardless of mill levies, if we stay in that two percent of tax asking increase, then I think we've kinda, that helps us hold the line, so to speak.
Okay, so that's, all you're looking at is that number compared to what our tax ask was last year period?
Right, well, that's where the focus needs to be.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think like that, thank you.
Well, that's where the focus needs to be.
Okay, all right, I don't get it, I don't get it.
All right, getting, let's, let's get back and, and discuss about how we want to do this, like, one day a week for two weeks, two days in a row? What, what would work for you, or do you wanna go?
Hey, my, I'm here.
You're here during the day anyway.
Yeah, just don't start before night.
Uh, what do you guys, what do you guys think about one day a week for two weeks, if we could get it all done in those two days? It'll be great.
Could you do it, back to everybody or?
Yeah, is it everybody except for those under three and a half percent increase?
That's what I would suggest, but I don't know if that works for everybody. Yeah, and I have no, and I have no problem with that, there's, you know, we, we've had the years where we met with everybody and nothing was changed, they were minimal increases, and they needed.
I'd just like to say.
Hi, how are you, good kind of a thing, and that's great if we all had the time to do that. Uh, but I think in this case where we, 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 uh, focus in on those, on the, on the big increase, and see if there's anything that can be done with those, those may be the ones that we need to, we need to talk with, yeah.
You gotta focus on.
Is there any chance of, starting at like a one o'clock till seven o'clock?
I think that'd work, yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine too, it'd be fine.
You bet. They'll give us the morning.
Get the morning, get our work done, I like that.
If we could start at one, go to se- be prepared to go to seven.
Yeah, that's fine with her.
And if we could try and get most everybody in in two of those days.
And if we need to go a third, go a third, I mean, that's.
So she's gonna advertise something, that's right, so, yeah.
Well, you could advert- you could advertise for three if you didn't need it, don't do it.
Right, if you don't need it, you don't have to do it.
Are we going consecutive days or just on a Wednesday and then the next Wednesday here?
Or we're.
I'd, I'd rather just get away with two days in a row, go back for a third if we need to.
That, that's fine, just trying to make it easy on everybody, I have no problem with, with that.
Are we talking about possibly starting as early as next week?
You tell me. Steve's are gone all next week, so.
Well, we're gonna do it in two weeks though, so, he could be gone next week, he could be there a week after.
Yeah, I think we're just doing two days.
Two days right in a row, consecutively?
Two, three, three days we're in a plan, so maybe the week of the twelfth, can you guys hold that one off?
I won't be here on the twelfth.
You, you won't be the whole week or just that day?
Not on August twelfth, I won't be. The whole week, three, just that day, August the twelfth, I will.
Yeah, just the twelfth.
Okay, that's fine.
Um.
Yeah, Monday's probably not the best anyway.
Let's schedule, let's schedule Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday then.
Thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth?
I was gonna se- I was gonna suggest that third day be like a week or two weeks later.
If that works.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea.
So thirteenth, fourteenth.
Give people time to.
Re-adjust, re-adjust their figures, that's a good idea, good idea.
Okay, hold on. Thirteen.
Yeah, I would, I like that thought, um, with the thought of maybe the next week.
Fourteenth and then pick one, then next week.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Why can't you just do it along with your meetings?
That makes for a long night.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
Yeah, it, uh.
All right, pick a day.
So we're gonna start the thir- Let's go the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Thirteenth and fourteenth.
And maybe the twenty-fourth or twenty-second.
And then the twenty-first on the, on the, for the third meeting.
All of that.
August twenty, the twenty-first?
I said, the, I, I mentioned the twenty-first, we could, we could do twenty, I don't care.
Okay.
So we said the thirteenth, the fourteenth?
Thirteenth and fourteenth and the twenty-first.
And you said one to sub it or beginning, commence at one?
One, start, one and then go till, try to finish up by six or seven.
I'm begging you for some really minutes.
We're gonna start at one o'clock?
That works, that works.
Yes.
And I'll get your books to you as soon as I get them printed.
Can we, can we send a letter, an email, just, uh, that says, hey, here's where we're at, here's where we need to be?
Take another one.
Get your initial cuts in before we, before we make the cuts.
I will get something out tomorrow, yeah, I'll get something out tomorrow. To everybody and that what our potential plan is and find out what their schedules are like too.
And if there's any, any particular department that any of you wanna, wanna visit with, make sure Lisa knows so she can notify. And right now, we'll just go to, to the, to the ones with the big increase. I'd like to. I'd like to look at mapping, because like I said, I know they bought all those programs last year and paid for that trip out to California. All that stuff was, and now they've increased their budget eight thousand dollars, that, that don't look right to me. That could just include.
Huh?
That could be just operating expenses.
They, they finished their last wage adjustment too, they were part of the three-year plan. You remember that, Paul S. Mike, so that was some of that.
Well, I don't, but I don't think, I think some of this other stuff oughta come off, even if they had that, 'cause they, I mean, they, they had bought a lot of stuff last year.
Yeah, they were able, they.
They had a lot of purchases, they, they bought a lot, they had a lot of.
They gotta do something in the salaries, then they may have to cut something else.
I agree, there's gotta be something adjusted there.
All right.
And then, um, is the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it for a second, please.
Adjustments.
And Charlie, I sent you stuff on.
Oh, the, uh, this board's desire to have legal counsel, is that, is that in here?
That needs to be.
Well, there's, I, we have legal expenses on, on my item, I will show you that. And a couple of places, we had extra money in insurance settlements last year that we didn't touch, I mean, it was just.
We need to decide how that legal counsel's going to work, whether we have a retainer or a, or a per item that we're dealing with.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, and I should mention on that, uh, I think I've told you before, but Phil, I told Phil Kelly that we need to focus on the solar stuff, but when he's, when they get done with the solar things, that we need to get serious about, um, how we can.
He said he's gonna be here until the first of the year, and he said that's all we're getting for, he said he will be done.
He will.
Retiring?
And then we told each other that he's, Phil Kelly told us that I could get him to tell.
Phil Kelly's done.
End of the year. End of the year.
Okay.
Said he's got, we got him till January.
So that may change a few things, but at the very least, I told him that, maybe even with that thought in mind, we could use him to help us figure out how we're gonna, we need an attorney, to know how we're gonna hire an attorney.
That might be.
And maybe that'd be a good job for him to do if he's leaving.
So.
Okay.
Um, can you put in here, put in fifty thousand dollars for the commissioner room upgrade? The, that's the upgrade to get this, the room ADA hearing compliant, um, s- room scheduler, uh, technology for recording and automatic upload to, um, online publishing.
Doing?
Uh, that's, that's a high number, but that's, that's the starting point, I guess. And what I'd like to see is, um, you know, if planning commission's gonna use this room, tourism's gonna use this room, any other public meetings that take place that, that we're gonna record, publish, have available, um, maybe there could be some cost sharing there, so it's not just coming out of the commissioner's budget, but it's coming out of those other entities. 'Cause if we're, if we're doing it for all public meetings, then maybe those other offices should share the cost.
Because they're all, they're all within us, aren't they?
The committees don't have money.
Aren't they out, the ones, any of them outside? That you named, and who else uses the, the room that would be outside?
Not outside the county.
That's for that country.
These are all in the county meetings.
Okay, so you're saying.
So I guess you could put it in the general budget or the, I'm just.
Thinking that they should share, like tourism could pitch in a little bit from their budget, kinda thing.
That's kinda what I was thinking, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we are we.
There is a, yeah. There is a piece in this, in the tourism statute that says, you know, costs for recording me- meeting minutes and that kinda stuff can be farmed out, so.
Okay, are you okay with this, now, Lisa?
I, you got, I got what I needed.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Ken, I had a sister-in-law die today, do you care if I leave here, I, I, I keep getting calls here from my niece.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, it's okay, I just, it's gonna be fine, okay.
We're gonna be leaving.
It's gonna be tough.
What about the?
People don't.
It'll be tough, or you need to. All right. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, if not, we're adjourned.
Did you wanna?
I asked. You guys, yeah, please, I'm sorry. I, that's why, that's why I was.
Comment? Yeah.
I'm just, this meeting had that major.
That, no, we're just on general discussion stuff, so.
Well.
You guys can talk anytime, always. No, it's at the very, very top of urgent.
Comments from the public may be received on, on any agenda item. Go ahead.
All right, Kelly, you have my name and my address, would you like?
Yeah, I do, I got you.
All right, thanks. Um, so several years ago, I was the director of, uh, the only active duty Navy museum, uh, the only active duty facing staff thing that the Navy funds, actually, that's not the Blue Angels. And it was an enormous funding line item, uh, for the Navy, uh, because it was bringing the public in. Uh, and alongside us, we had a five oh one C three that helped support us, uh, in addition to the federal, uh, budget that we had. Uh, alongside that, we had a number of municipalities around us that, uh, helped in, in ways that they could, whether that was through the five oh one C three or, or gifts to the Navy. All of that to say, I was alongside a retired admiral, uh, who ran the five oh one C three as the president. Uh, he did all the fundraising that I was forbidden from doing, 'cause you can't do that when you're wearing a uniform, you'll go straight to jail. Um, and one of the things I took away from him was that, uh, a vision without funding is hallucination. Uh, and it's just always stuck with me that you can have a lot of great ideas, but if you don't have the funding for it, you're just dead in the water. Uh, so you probably ought to have a viable path. Love the concept of the sports tourism focus. I think there's a lot of meat on the bone there. Um, but, uh, you know, it's not the only method in this county to create economic development, which was a lot of what was discussed. Uh, three and a half months ago, our family brought you, uh, a fairly significant economic development project, and there's plenty of conversation that could be had of whether or not you feel, uh, that's as viable or more viable or less viable, but the conversation was halted with a three, two, no vote by this board. Uh, and, uh, you know, that brings you back to a place where with these great ideas, potentially, uh, at the risk of, I should say, inspiring more great ideas, I'll just ask you to think creatively along the lines of what you could do, uh, with collecting fees related to electrical generation inside this county. Uh, perhaps, uh, you know, stopping the solar project in the southwest corner of the county. Uh, you unwittingly closed a door, uh, that could've allowed you to, uh, solicit a, a fee through that project that could have easily funded the commissioner, the sports commissioner that you were discussing earlier, without impacting any status quo, which is where all of the gnashing of teeth comes from whenever you have these conversations, uh, trying to do something new, unique and different. If you have to stop doing something, that can be a problem, right? So, uh, please keep that in mind the next time that the solar opportunity comes around, that there are other creative ways that the county can, uh, you can't tax, you don't have the authority for that explicitly beyond what you already do for property taxes. Um, but there are other ways that you can collect fees, even just filing a conditional use permit, there's a fee that's due there. So you set schedules of fees, uh, perhaps this is a method. Um. Yeah, all those comments were inspired just by watching the presentation, uh, just glad to see it. Uh, that brings me back to my standard question, which I don't expect any different. Thanks, Mr. Harris, for your update. Uh, but the one thing you didn't say was, uh, has the county, uh, seen its way fit to prove that the moratorium is legal as it stands for the conditional use permit that is in place?
That's a question for Phil Kelly. I don't think we can answer that.
Right. And he hasn't given you any answer that you can carry forward?
Um, he hasn't, but we did talk about, um, that, uh, the form that Kyle Long gave, and that's related to that story, I believe. And, um, Bill and Phil both had that. And so, um, whether we get an answer prior to the meeting, I don't know.
Do you at least think that they'll be able to speak to it at the nineteenth, whenever?
I'll be sure and talk to them about it.
Okay, great.
And you're talking about specifically the, the letter that Kyle Long gave us?
Nope, different subject.
Okay, so.
You got both of them, you got Kyle that night, you had me that night.
You're talking about the. Moratorium. All right, the moratorium.
That's right.
Of whether or not we can do that.
Right.
I'll ask you to comment on it.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you much. Anybody else? All right, if not, we are now adjourned.